Call the school committee meeting to order. We are being recorded by Wake Cam. And I'm sure you've all heard Chris's little speech, which I will try to paraphrase. Wait, that's a public comment speech, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
We're doing that first?
Welcome and call to order. Okay. So this is the Whelan School Committee. We ask that everybody be respectful. We ask that everybody stick to what is within the purview of the school committee. We welcome feedback from the public on those limitations. How many people want to do public comment? Two? Three? Maybe four? Okay, so you can have, what, two minutes? Is that what it is?
Yeah.
Okay.
Two or three, whatever it is.
All right, and Chris should be in in a minute. Right, so public comments open. Who wants to go first?
A price? Good evening, everybody. My name is Karen Kelly, and I live at 90 Old Connecticut Path. I just want to take a quick moment to tell the school committee how much I appreciate your efforts to install qualified leadership at the interim level next year. Every Whelan resident who has kids in schools right now realizes how incredibly important it is to start next year with stable leadership in central office. We are wildly appreciative of your efforts to interview and hire an enthusiastic, experienced, and level-headed leader. Thank you for pushing forward to do what's best to serve those you're commissioned to: teachers, parents, and most importantly, our students. Thank you.
Hi. I started. There were four people that wanted to speak.
Hello. My name is Corey McArthur, and I live at Conover Road. I just want to say how excited I am that we have five experienced candidates for the interim superintendent position. I thought we had some great candidates last night, and I'm excited to hear from the others tonight. I know I speak for many when I say how grateful I am for the countless hours that this school committee is putting in and for the sense of urgency that you're acting with to move our district forward. With half of our senior leadership and a quarter of our admin council leaving in just two and a half months, we do not have time to waste. I'd also like to take a moment to condemn the vitriol and the personal attacks that were voiced by a select few on Tuesday. What our district needs more than ever right now is to look forward, to seek solutions, and to work to get back to heel. Sowing deeper divisions is not productive. Whelan is ready to move on, and thank you to this school committee for helping us find our way forward. Thank you.
Do we too? No. Anyway.
Hi. My name is Nancy Dunstone. I live at 70 Bow Street. My son graduated from Whelan High School in 2021, and my daughter is currently a sophomore here. I'm also a lifelong educator and am an English teacher at Lincoln-Segway High School, where I've been for over 20 years. I first want to thank the school committee for their willingness to serve our town in such an essential role. I'm very grateful for their unflagging commitment to our kids, even in the face of ongoing hostility and personal attacks from some members of our community and beyond. I want to echo an important public comment from Monday night's meeting, which I fear may have got lost amid all the vitriol I heard. In her comments, Sejal Sridhivasan implored us all to refocus our energies on what truly matters as we move forward, how to best serve the needs of the students of this district. I am not so naive as to believe that we all share the same vision for exactly how to do that, or that after the interviews conclude tonight, we will all have the same choice for our next leader. But it's essential that we ultimately unite behind whatever decision is made by the school committee that we elected and invested with that responsibility. Yes, we have lost a lot in the last two years, but it is beyond time for us to think about what's in front of us rather than what's behind us. There is so much good here for us to work with. We have a dedicated, thoughtful, creative staff of teachers, counselors, and administrators, a passionate, generous parent community, and so many unique, curious kids who need us to be at our very best at this crucial moment. I hope we are finally at a point where fighting for those kids will be more important than fighting against each other. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes.
Erin Frontis from Bow Road. Hello, school committee and Whelan community. I'm here tonight to express support of the individuals of the school committee, the committee itself, and, most importantly, the process ahead. I support you because you are all individuals who have been giving your personal time and experience for the good of the town, each of you with loved ones you go home to, and for many children in the schools every day. And I support them too, because I suspect this has been a hard time on them as well. I support the committee because we elected you to do this work for us, and I trust that as a body you will collaborate and compromise and find solutions. And I support the process because it will take us forward. There's no doubt that the district is facing significant challenges, and it is our duty and our obligation to come together as a community to solve them. But with a vacuum of leadership, we won't be able to get started on the hard work ahead. And without leadership, we won't have a stable environment in which we can retain and recruit talent. Meanwhile, there are kids in the school every single day who we need to focus on so that come fall, the classrooms will be staffed, special education services will be delivered, social and emotional support will be in place, principals will greet the kids coming off the buses, and above all, learning will occur in a stable, functioning environment. Can we as a community come together to support these people who are doing this work because of civic-mindedness and good intentions? Can we come together to support this committee so that they can focus on hiring the leaders and administrators we need? And can we not obstruct, but rather smooth the path by supporting the process that will move us forward so that we can begin to do the hard work ahead? Can we do this for our kids who are in school every day trying to learn, and our teachers and administrators who, through dedication and care, have kept the schools functioning? I hope that the answer is yes. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. We will close public comments. Just me. I was trying to be quiet because I started to speak up and then somebody came up to talk. All right. So Jessica Palazzotti, Indian Road. I speak on behalf of myself, not for the committee. I sit at this table and was elected by this community. I serve you to the best of my ability and without a personal agenda. Listening to public comment Monday night was difficult, and it represents the tension within our community and the divide that exists. The comments related to DEI, our fiscal accountability, and most of all, the need for information transparency struck a chord with me as those are feelings I share. Prior to being elected to serve this community, I sat where you are, confused and unclear, seeking transparency. Now I sit here still sometimes feeling confused about many things I think I should know more about. We're at a pivotal point in decision-making as to who will lead our schools starting July 1st, and I am uncomfortable with the process that has gotten us to this point. So how can I expect the community to be comfortable and have faith in us? We haven't reached finality with Dr. Eazy's situation. The public has not been provided with details. I understand the frustration of the community. We might not be able to share details, but we can be responsible in how we move forward. I have asked repeatedly how we are paying for two superintendents and have received no answer. To me, that is a very important part of this process and something we need to know before anyone is hired. So I've sought answers. This week, I reached out to our Director of Finance and Operations to see if we have the money or where we can find the money for a second superintendent's salary, and was told that I'm the only committee member to reach out with this question and that there are no extra funds to support this hiring without something will have to, sorry, something will have to be cut. We're less than a month away from town meeting, where we'll be presenting a budget in good faith to our community, asking for their approval of a carefully crafted budget. I wonder where these cuts will be made and how they will trickle down to our students. I'm unclear of how we will maintain our FTEs and services to students. We already operate with a very long. Sorry. Can I just read the last? I want great things for our schools and don't want the kids to suffer. Okay.
Robbins, Flagg, and Tron. Jess, I want to thank you. You're starting the path on transparency that our community deserves. You just don't go spending money we don't have. And I really appreciate your words that you said tonight, and hopefully this will open up discussion with the whole school committee that we take it, maybe have to look at different paths that will be best for our community. I have been a strong supporter of the schools for many, many, for decades. It started with my oldest daughter in 1995, and I've been active for it, for the schools since then. And I really appreciate what you just did, how it can be difficult, and thank you very
Anyone else? Okay, we're going to close public comments, and I'm going to hand this meeting to Chris.
Hey, Chris, we didn't do, I was wondering if I could talk about an event.
Oh, I forgot to do it. It's okay. Yes. Welcome part.
Yes. Sorry.
No, it's okay because I just really wanted to say about this. So last week, so as being part of the school committee, we all got an invitation, as did the Board of Selectmen and some other town employees, to go to a celebratory iftar at the Islamic Center of Boston. And I was, I'd been invited before, before COVID, but never been able to go. And I was able to go, and I just wanted to share with you guys and the community what a wonderful event it was. We, there was, there were a couple Board of Selectmen people, Board of Selectmen there, and I was there, and the chief of police, and the town manager, and, and people were able to invite their friends, non-Muslim friends. And it was just a really incredible way to learn about, I mean, I've driven by that place for like a really long time and always, never been in. You got, we tour to learn about the Muslim culture and Ramadan, and there was a slight fire in the middle, the tablecloth caught on fire by the chafing.
The religious.
Literally. And we had to evacuate for 15 minutes. But that didn't, that didn't forge anything, and then we went back and we got to participate in a lot of things and then join them in a meal. And it's just really, really a lovely community that they have there. And I just, I would encourage anyone, you know, in the future, I think they do these things annually, if you're invited and you can go to take advantage of it because it was great.
So you know, Paul Stein used to go to that.
Oh, he did.
And the last year that he was here, I forget which year that was. I went because he encouraged me too, and it was lovely. It was really lovely.
Yeah, it was really. So anyway, and I just wanted to thank the Islamic Center of Boston because it was, it was a really nice, it's a really nice thing they did. Nice effort. That was it.
Great. Thank you, Jeanie.
Thanks.
Does any other committee member want to share something as part of the welcome?
Did I share the parent conferences in person? We've had so many meetings, I don't know what I've shared in.
I thought you did.
Did I? I did. Okay. That was the last school night, too.
Okay. All right, then we'll move forward. The acting superintendent's update. Dr. Graham.
Thank you, everyone. So the first agenda item is asking for the school committee to discuss and potentially approve the annual high school football preseason trip to Camp Caribou in Maine. And I had not anticipated Scott Perseian being here, but he showed up, so if you'd like to, I could invite Scott up to the table and there's information.
Watch it.
You can come sit if you want.
Whatever you want.
Either way, it's fine, whatever you prefer to. So this is the annual trip. I'll turn it over to you and maybe give like just a quick summary. You have a written summary in the packet, but Scott, take like a minute or so.
Seventeen, this will be our 17th year during the trip. It's at Camp Caribou up in Winslow, Maine, owned by a Whelan family that had sons and daughters go through the system, so they've supported us since day one. It's a great experience. We actually go with Wellesley and Weston High Schools, so the three W towns are there together. And we all get along, we have a great time. And it's not only about football, it's about team bonding. They have world-class ropes course, they have a zip line into the water, as well as many other kinds of activities, beach volleyball, football, softball, you name it. So it's just a real team bonding event to really kick off the year. So I'm asking the school committee once again if you will give us permission for an overnight trip.
How many kids are taking this?
This year, so we have, we have got a waiver the last couple of years to bring our eighth graders up to play with our freshman team, so we'll be around, I believe we'll be close to 80 kids and about, definitely eight staff members will be there. Most of staff members are Whelan High School alumni. Out of the, there's 10 of us actually. We'll all, eight will be there all the time, and sometimes there'll be 10 staff there. Out of the eight staff members, out of 10 staff, eight of them are Whelan High School alumni. So I've been through this camp and know what it means to go there. It's been a great experience for us over the last 17 years, 16 years, so we need to make it 17.
Great.
Anybody have any other questions about the trip?
I did not. I move that we approve the trip to Camp Caribou as presented.
Second.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. All opposed? No one's opposed, motion passes.
You did a much better job than I would have. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks for being here. Appreciate it.
So the next item is the last day of school for Locur Elementary. If the committee remembers, there was a day back, I think it was in February, early February, where Locur missed a day of school because of, I think it was a problem with the boiler, if I remember correctly.
Yes.
A flood. And students are required by state law to be in school for 180 days, which means that we need to add a day of school for the Locur students. We discussed this in central office multiple times, I've talked about it with Brian Jones multiple times, and I'd like to bring my plan to the school committee. I don't know if you need to, I know you're in charge of calendars, so I don't know if you need to officially authorize or not. But the plan is very similar to what we did last year when we had flood at the middle school and needed to have middle school students go an additional day. So the current last day of school for everyone else is Thursday, June 15. That will be the 180th day, that will be a super early release day, just one of Jess's favorite things, a super early release day. And with elementary school students being dismissed at 11:30, high school 12:15, I think middle school 12:20. So that's everyone but Locur. Locur will actually have a full day of school for students that day, or my plan is to have Locur have a full day of school for students that day. Then the following day, Friday, June 16, students at all the other schools, they're done. Staff at all the other schools, sorry, WTA staff at the other schools would work a half day, that's their .5 of the 182.5 days. Locur students would then be dismissed at 11:30, similar to what had happened with the elementary schools the day before. And then WTA staff would stay until the end of that day. Typically, they would be then a half day for them to work the following weekend, there's a long weekend for Juneteenth, and my plan would be to not ask WTA members to come back that following Friday, but instead to be done on that Friday at 2:45 with all their contractual obligations. This is what we did last year at the middle school. So that will get students to 180th day, and then the rest of the WTA staff would work a half day, Locur staff would work a full day. For our WISA staff, they would work a full day on that Thursday, the 15th, and Friday, the 16th. WISA staff then, they work 185 days, so there would be three days after that that they could potentially work. Oftentimes, WISA staff will use personal days, or they might have comp time that they've accumulated to use then. Principals also have the discretion, if all of the work has been done that WISA staff need to do, then they have the option of dismissing staff early. So principals would maintain their discretion for those days as well. So that would mean essentially on that Friday, the 16th, that would most likely be the last day of work for staff and would be the last day of school for Locur students. And we've talked internally about busing, how that will work after school as well, so Locur students would have full after-school base on Thursday, the 15th, and they would have the shortened Super Wednesday base on the 16th. So for Locur, it would be essentially just a full normal day on Thursday, then the half day on Friday. So that is before.
And what you said, you mean you wouldn't be bringing the WTA staff back on the next Tuesday?
Correct. Correct. Yeah, Monday is Juneteenth, so that would be a holiday anyway. Yeah, so the idea is that it would be done on that Friday, the 16th.
Great.
So that's consistent with, we've had this situation before. We did last year with the middle school.
Right.
And this plan is consistent.
This is exactly the same thing that we did.
Great. Okay.
Sounds good.
Any questions from the committee?
Do you want us to approve?
Um, I mean, it wouldn't hurt.
I move that we approve.
In case you're supposed to and you don't.
I move that we approve Perry's plan for the last day of Locur school. I will second.
All those in favor? All those opposed?
Great, thanks so much. So the plan is that now, I think I'm going to communicate that out to Locur staff, Brian Jones is going to communicate that out to Locur families so that they can plan accordingly. And if you're wondering why I waited a while to do this, I wanted to make sure we didn't have a snow day that threw off my plans and pushed it to the following week. I think with the weather this week, we could okay with not having an additional snow day.
Plastic.
I don't want to jinx myself yet. Thank you. And then the final thing, there were some other topics that I was originally going to want to present on tonight. I've instead, I know that there are some interviews you're going to do this evening, so I didn't want to push things too long. So instead, we've moved those topics to, I think, the next meeting. I'll have to double-check on people's schedules, but I was excited to talk about some of the work that's happening around the writing program implementation with Empowering Writers this year, and then get some information about the math pilot that's been happening. We also have some exciting news about grants, but that's going to happen most likely at the next meeting. So the final thing I wanted to do is give you a quick update on where we stand with different leadership positions and where we are in the hiring process. Happy Hollow principle, we had four finalists. Those finalists did their interviews last week and this week. So at this point, it's me going in and looking at feedback from staff, from administrators, and from parents. We were able to post the parent forums online. I've asked parents to get me their feedback about those by Friday afternoon. And so I'll be looking at that, I'll be doing reference checks. I had hoped to make a final decision around that by the end of this week. I think I was a little bit aggressive in my timeline, so it's looking like that's going to spill over into the April vacation week, but I'm hoping to be able to communicate that out as soon as possible. We had four really strong finalists, so I was really excited about the Happy Hollow staff, getting to meet them, families getting to meet them. Then the interim assistant superintendent position, that search committee concluded the first round. There were three finalists who were named, those, that information was communicated out in the last couple of days. I sent out a note about that, and so I'll be figuring out opportunities for those three finalists now to be in the district and have opportunities to meet a variety of different stakeholder groups to help me in making a decision. Put one little asterisk next to that that I'm going to come back to. The assistant director of student services, that process is pretty far along, so I'm hopeful that I'll be able to make an announcement about that within the next couple of weeks. And then the interim director of student services, I have, I'm starting to pull together, I've got mostly a finalized committee for that. We haven't met yet, so we'll probably have our first meeting right after the April vacation, and then move forward with identifying candidates to interview. So the asterisk at the assistant superintendent is one that I want to bring back to this. I know that the committee is in the process of thinking about the acting superintendent position, and depending upon your timeline for when you're able to make a decision about that, if you made a decision in a time that makes sense, I would love to include that person in working with me around the interim assistant superintendent and interim director of student services decision. But again, you know, I know that that's, you all will be discussing that, figuring out what your timeline's going to be. So that is where we stand.
Great, thank you.
Of course. And I think that's it for my report.
That's great. Anybody have any questions? Thanks, appreciate it. We move into financial matters, and it looks like we're going to be skipping over the grants through that.
There's one grant, there's one in here, Title II-A, that I believe we actually brought last night, and the school committee has already voted to approve the $281 amendment increase there, which we are looking forward to spending. But I think, did you want to talk about the MECO?
I'm just asking the committee to approve receipt of $38,866 from the MECO supplemental special education grant, to be part of our special education services for our Boston resident students. Just need a formal vote on that.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions on that? Nope. Does someone want to do a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
Through the fiscal year '23 grants related to MECO 318 supplemental special education grant in the amount of $38,866, and 140 Title II-A grant increase of 200.
Just skip that one.
What?
That one was handled.
Oh, I thought we had to do something different on that. All right, sorry. Misunderstood. Uh, that's it.
I think we got it. Okay.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? No one's opposed, motion passes. Thank you. Next, Tom.
We did that.
Appreciate it.
There was something.
Finance subcommittee update.
Okay, this will be really short. I just wanted to let everyone know that we are meeting next week, the finance subcommittee, which is Ellen and me, with Tom, as to do a couple of things to talk about transition as he finishes up the year and moves on, and kind of the finance subcommittee transitions a little bit, and just making sure that we have everything that we, that we want to pass along to Susan when she comes on board, which Tom has already started, great thing, like a great pile. And I know I have a couple of things that I want to make sure are on Susan's list. And then we're also, as part of our meeting, going to meet with the FinCom chairs and vice chair to talk about what they're looking for for next year, so we can get a head start and Tom can start to get that set up so that Susan can be up to speed on that. So that was my update, just letting you know that's happening.
Great. That sounds great.
We can pass over P M B C because neither Angela or I could go to the last meeting, and I didn't get ahold of them.
Okay. Okay. All right, well, so there are no other financial matters for us to discuss before moving on to administrative matters? No? Okay. Discussion and review of the FY '24 budget booklet under administrative matters.
So I think you delegated this to Aaron and me.
Did you speak up, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
I think you delegated this to Aaron and me, and so we have been working on the, basically, got a little behind. My fault. So Aaron has the draft, and we, it's not here to look at, but it will be posted soon on our website so that everyone has it before town meeting. And if Tom doesn't know, I can't remember if I asked you this before the meeting, but I'm going to send it to you too, just to give it the once-over for us. So it's in process.
Great.
Okay.
Well, we've had a lot going on, so I can understand that you would not have ready for this.
But as soon as we finalize it, I'll email it to you guys, email you guys a link to.
Okay.
And I'll see it.
All right. Wonderful. Approval of the release with redactions for executive session minutes for multiple dates.
So should I mention?
Go for it.
Okay. So part of, part of what we have to do with executive session minutes is when we approve them for release in executive session, once we do that, we also have to announce that we've approved them in regular session. So in the last couple of meetings, we've, we've released a slew of them, some with, some with redactions. They're all listed there, the ones that we've released. The ones that are still redacted are redacted as the law allows, there are various reasons that you can redact things, negotiations, things that are still ongoing. Some, I'm trying to think what else, litigation that's still ongoing, personnel matters, there are various things that could be redacted. And so anyway, we went over that in executive session a couple of times, and all those minutes that are listed are posted online, some with redactions, and we just need to, we do not need to vote, we just need to say that we have done it. So shall I read the dates because I feel like I should?
Yes, that sounds great.
So in executive session, we approved the release with redactions of the following executive session minutes. April 27, 2015, April 21, 2017.
August.
Thank you. August 21, 2017, January 12, 2022, January 19, 2022, January 24, 2022, January 26, 2022, February 9, 2022, February 16, 2022, March 16, 2022, March 30, 2022, April 13, 2022, April 27, 2022, May 11, 2022, May 25, 2022, June 8, 2022, June 22, 2022, July 20, 2022, August 24, 2022, and September 7, 2022. And we have a few more that we're going to release tonight, and so we'll put those on the agenda for next week's time. Okay?
Great.
That's all I have to say.
Do we need to vote on this, or?
We don't.
Okay.
I don't believe.
Okay. Okay. We are very much ahead of schedule, which is fine, but so...
Let's do the rest.
Yeah, we'll, we'll skip over, we have an interview scheduled for 7:15, so we'll move to the policy matters at this time. So Policy Subcommittee, would you like to take this?
So Erin and I are trudging our way through policies that have been sitting for a very long time, and we've been distracted by other things. So we met, and we have two policies to bring to the committee today. KDBA, which is accessibility and return of tests, which would be new to our manual, and IIB, which is class size, and Chris, we are not ignoring you, we just had to add one little tweak, and we ran out of time, and we will talk in depth about it at a later data.
No worries.
So with that, I know Erin had a couple of things she wanted to say to you about KDBA before we move forward.
Yes, so I want to make sure that everyone's working off of the draft policy that is in our folder for tonight. I am confirming for everyone right now that that is the appropriate one. This is really just codifying the existing practice at the high school and the other And we went through a lot of different work with Michelle and Dr. Easy and Perry, and we just want to put it in place so that current practice continues, no matter what kind of leadership we have.
So I had a question. So we went, so, so I'm just going to preface it with, having been on this committee for a while, this has been a big issue for a number of years. So I was thrilled when the task force was put together to actually address it and come up with some recommendations. And I went back and looked at the report today, and the recommendations at the, say that it's not to be, not for school polit, not for school committee policy, but for building, I have it here, but operation, you know, for a building thing. So why, I'm just curious, why are we putting it in policy when the recommendation was not for that?
So at that time, it was also communicated, because I was on the task force, that, I don't know, I'm trying to think of the delicate way to say it, that if, that with the leadership that was there, that that was going to be a practice, they were going to support, and with changes in leadership, things could change. So the policy Subcommittee feels very strongly that because we could have multiple changes in leadership over the next year, because we're, you know, hiring actings, interns, et cetera, that there's no stability for the students, and that this could, the recommendations could go by the wayside. So in order to ensure those recommendations are continuous and outlive all of us, we felt that there should be policy. So I did bring this to Kevin, and he said he was on board, so.
Yes, it was, West. Yes.
So can I just ask a question? When you say "it was communicated," that leaves it a little vague. So is that something that the task force decided as a task force, or was there some other decision? How did that get communicated? Like, what was that?
What do you mean? Which part?
So Jeannie asked a question, which I had as well.
Yeah.
Of, it was supposed to be building level, right?
Yeah.
Okay, and then now it's going to be school committee policy level, right? Which I do think the school committee has the authority to do that. Looked that up in 2018. But, but I'm wondering how that jumped, you said "it was communicated," and that's a little vague to me. I want to know how it was communicated and who communicated it.
So we had conversations with Dr. Easy and Michelle, and they assured us and really truly wanted this to be something that they worked on to build as part of the culture. But if they're not, if, well, Michelle is here, but if Dr. Easy is not here to build that culture that he wanted, we don't know what culture would be built. If that makes sense, like by, if another person in charge would do, would be committed to this as he was.
I also understood it a little bit, that there was some split decision within the task force itself as to implementation of policy or keeping it at a building level practice slash policy. And so the hope was to work within the buildings, to have this, the administration and the staff kind of get behind the reasoning that the task force went through, and the importance of the return of the test and the formative assessments. And so they were really working to get an understanding of that and kind of get a lot of buy-in, and so they didn't want to jump right to a policy. So they did, however, implement this as of September or August.
The building level.
Well, I was just going to say, for, I think for everything but science. Science needed some more time to work on changing their approaches to the tests. And so they got on board with it and started it in January. And so that's why we are here, to make sure that it stays in place.
So we're in our first year of trying it, right?
Yeah.
So I appreciate, I appreciate what you, I'm having a hard time with this, as you can see. So because, because we went through this process, and I mean, this has been years, and like we had a task force, and I thought it was so great, and then we had this list of recommendations, and we're doing them. And so I guess it just seems that if we deviate from the recommendations, we're not really following the process of the task, and we're not, the process, which was the task force that came up with the recommendations, that we're not, we're not honoring that. But you were on the task force, so.
I was on the task force.
Yeah.
And everybody agreed that if we needed to implement a po, not everybody, but they agree, there was words, there were things exchanged that were made very clear that a policy, if we felt necessary...
Okay, I'm just going to cut to the chase. Did the majority of the task force support this or not? Or they didn't decide?
I would, that is a question for Michelle, because she has the vote. Or I don't, we didn't vote.
Okay, I see, I see. Okay, okay. I have a question that, I don't want to interrupt Jeannie. So I'm going to just ask, some, I was, I was too busy today to read through all those emails. All right. So summative tests, like the, the end of the quarter, end of the quarter, end of the semester, end of the year tests are not being returned?
Midterms and finals are excluded from this, as well as anything AP or copyrighted.
But not chapter?
Correct.
Not unit?
Correct.
Because the experts, so Research for Better Teaching came in and spoke to the task force.
I remember.
I don't disagree at all with the recommendations.
No, and they were awesome.
It's the process I'm struggling with.
So Research for Better Teaching came, and they were awesome, and everything in here is built upon what they would recommend. And not that they were recommending policy language, but everything that was put in here was because of, was part of that work that they say our best teaching practices would test return.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not debating the, as Ellen said, I'm not debating the process, and it seems like it's being implemented. I, not the process, but not the out, the, what's happening in the schools, like that, I'm just, it's just to me about whether we need, we need to write a policy or not, and I'm all, I'm basing that on, because we went through this whole thing of putting a task force together, and they came up with this recommendations of what to do, and we're doing it, and one of the recommendations was that it wasn't meant to be a school committee policy. So that's what I'm struggling with.
At that time.
Well, couldn't you say that with anything of this, at that time, though?
At that time.
But, but we're in the first year, so isn't that, I mean, we're following the process through.
Yes, but it would be helpful, and I totally agree, and that's why we want to codify the process, so the students are supported the best that they can.
I agree with the recommendations, agree with the, I'm struggling with, did the, what was the task force's, force's conclusion?
To be quite honest, I'm just going to come out and say it. I wasn't part of the task force. I got mixed feedback on what the end result was coming out of the task force on the specific implementation of a policy. My feeling behind this is Michelle got behind the policy. I think that, well, the best of my knowledge, but not from this face right now, Perry was on board with the policy as it's reducing to words current practice, and it was in the best interest of our students to simplify access to these materials. That's my support for it. And through conversation with Dr. Easy about this, I think there were a lot of hopes that it was going to become something that everyone would get behind, and there wouldn't be a need for a policy. So...
And so is the feeling that, because again, we're only in the first year, that people aren't behind it, is that what we're...
No, we just want to make sure that things are consistent, and the groundwork is there, and the work of the task force moves forward, and, you know.
See, so that, so I'm, I'm, this is where I, my head is. I like the recommendations. I'm all about codifying current practice, I don't have any issue with the substance. But I do have an issue with the task force work moving forward unless we know that the task force was actually behind doing this. I also am certain that we, as a body, have the authority to just do this, because it's in the interest of the students, and we can just do it.
You just need the policy that the task force was behind, making it into a policy.
Making it into a policy, yes.
The task force was, I believe, and again, you'd have to ask Michelle, but torn on policy. And at the time, it was, the plan was that Dr. Easy would get the buy-in and work with our teachers, and he really, that's what he was planning to do, but.
I see.
So...
Would you mind moving that Starbucks bag?
No, I like looking.
Because I feel like I'm...
So I'm stuck, very oddly, in process, not usually the thing that stops me, right? But I guess I, I don't know. I, I understand what Jeannie's saying, is we started on one process, and now we appear to be switching processes, right? Without knowing that the people that we entrusted the first process to would have recommended that, I guess is, is the word, right? But I also totally agree with you, Erin, that this is a good thing to do. So, and I know that we do actually, as a body, have the authority to do it, whether or without the task force, right? I just have trouble with you saying moving the task force work forward, because I'm not sure what the outcome of the task force was. And I don't, and I hate to stop us and delay and say, can we ask Michelle? But I don't know, I don't know what to do. So that's where I am. But I'm just one person.
Can I tell you that Michelle did really work with us on the wording, and ensuring that this was workable at all the schools, and that it was, that we weren't changing anything that was currently happening at the high school.
This is governing, governing all the schools?
It is, yeah. And so we did, we did talk to Perry and Michelle about that, right? And if there was any issue with this being implemented as a district-wide. And Michelle confirmed it did not change anything at the middle school, and it wouldn't implement, like change anything there by implementing this. She said, "I don't think it implements, it changes anything at the elementary level," but I didn't actually confirm that.
No, she did say that.
Oh, she did?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
So Michelle came to Policy Subcommittee...
Multiple times.
Yeah, multiple times.
But is she, is, so she thinks there should be a policy?
She's the curriculum person.
I think she is also torn, because she would, she thinks a policy is, I mean, I guess I don't want to speak for her. Let's put it that way. I'm not going to speak for Michelle.
So what would the process be from now? Let's, so let's say we say, "Let's go." It goes out for public comment, right?
Yeah, for 30 days.
And can we change our minds later, once we talk to Michelle?
That I don't know. Can you?
Well, yeah, it goes out for public comment, and then you have to actually formally approve it after it's out for public comment.
So we could have, we could send it out for public comment, and meanwhile have Michelle come here and talk to us about it? How about that?
Sure.
Because it does seem like something, well, I know, because I've spent years and years and years talking about this, that it is an issue, a matter of public interest.
And honestly, it's not for the public, like, and this might not sound right, but it's really for students. So one of the things that really struck me, sitting on the task force, was hearing students say that they would switch, like, classes for whatever reason, and everything was just so different, like, this person did give tests back, this person didn't, and I'm like, that just feels very inequitable. So if we just say, like, "This is what we do, and it's what's being done," so we're not saying, like, "Do something different," then it's beneficial to the students, which is really all it is. So they're expecting the same thing from class to class.
Which is why I am in favor of it, and as a parent, I have experienced the very event multiple times. So I know just what you're talking about. And it is, I think, in, for the benefit of the students. I just want to be sure it's done, like...
I think if we're going to follow up with Michelle, and given our discussion here, which I think there's been confusion, and I know, you know, I will admit, quite got some emails today about it that I haven't had a chance to read through completely, so I have some things I would also like to follow up on. I wonder if we should date this up at our, at our next meeting?
What do you guys feel about that?
And give us some time to look into some of the questions we have, perhaps have a conversation with Michelle. I think we might want to consider that.
I would like it done, because it's been something on my plate for multiple years. And it's definitely something I am 100% supportive of. And at the same time, does a couple of weeks matter? No. I guess my only thing is, is that, like, I would much prefer to do, to move forward, but...
Well, if it's codifying current practice, it's not going to change anything, one way or the other.
Unless, you never know. Because if it's current practice...
It's not going to change anything before July 1st.
Well, I would like this done before July 1st.
No, 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 I, I'm, I'm talking about April 20, whatever, it's our next meeting. I mean, I'm assuming Michelle's going to come and say that the majority of the task force was supportive of this. That's what I'm assuming Michelle is going to say.
Yeah.
So...
26.
And if you could say that definitively, that would be different. But that's what I'm assuming Michelle will come here and say. Yes, no? No?
Based on the feedback that I've received, and I don't know exactly who was on the task force, I wasn't part of the committee when the task force was formed, I get a lot of mixed messages about what came out of that task force. And so my feeling is, if they implemented this as a best practice in the district at the high school, I see it as in best interest of our families and our kids, and really, what harm does it do for us to set it in writing? That's my feeling. But because if we revert, and we have people that aren't following best practice from classroom to classroom, or subject to subject, the only people who end up getting hurt are students and our families, and that's my feeling on it.
But let me ask you this question, since, since I'm reading from the report right here, and it says, "The following recommendations of our task force are directed at school-level decisions regarding best instructional practices, not school committee policy," right? And then it lists all the things. So are there, have the schools made written procedures or policies themselves for this? Because that's what I would have thought...
Not to my knowledge. Not to my knowledge, but I was checking school council recently, and I did not see anything.
That, and so I hope you guys understand, like, for me at least, and it sounds like what Ellen's saying, too, is we're not against the recommendations, it's just we went through this whole process to get to this point with this, that said it was going to be building-based and not school committee policy, and so it seems like we're going against what the task force has said, and it was only a few months ago. only a few months ago. That, that's where my struggle is.
It was like a year ago.
Okay.
Yeah.
But that's my struggle. That's my struggle. It's not like with the returning of the tests. I'm really talking about, yeah, about.
I can just see your.
The school, yeah, the task force and their recommendation.
I also do want to point out to you guys that we did get an email from someone who was really unhappy with the language, but they weren't looking at our policy that we have in front of us. So I just wanted to make that clear. And when they were looking at the policy that we have in front of us, they were very happy to see that it was worded our way and not the way of the other policy in a different town.
I did see that.
That's helpful.
All right. So, um, so wait, what are you guys looking for? Put it out for public, approve it and put it out for public comment? Is that the recommendation of the policy committee?
That's my recommendation.
That would be mine as well.
I suppose to wait two weeks and have Michelle come up?
She can still talk to us. It's out for.
The reason why I think that that's not necessarily going to help is because of the feedback that I've received with respect to the task force and the different split.
I know, and I get that, but I guess I go back to, if there was all this split, and this was the compromise, for lack of a better word, that everyone came up with, then by us changing one part of it, one way, what about the people who have, want to change other parts of it the other way? And if we disregard what the task force recommended, which was only in August of 2022, I don't know. It just, it doesn't feel right to me. So.
So this paragraph that starts assessment and ends grading purposes, that codifies current practice after those were put into place, does it also codify current practice prior to those being put into place? Or did those actually change the practice at the high school?
You mean the recommendations of the task force?
The recommendations.
The recommendations changed. The practice.
The practice at the high school, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Like, the day that the report was presented, I think Dr. Easy said, like, the next day he was going to implement it.
Yeah.
And then ask for time for science.
Yeah. I think. I think Erin has persuaded me. I think we should, I'm going to, I'm going to say that we should approve it and put it out, but I would like Michelle to come in and talk to us about the task force.
Absolutely.
And I'm going to have some pointed questions about what went on with the decisions to the task force.
You really want to know?
I do want to, yes, I really want to know. Yes, I want to.
So why, if we're going to do that, why wouldn't we just wait until the 26th?
Because I, because Erin has persuaded me that, given where we are in the district, if this is a policy that is in the interest of our students, we should put our credibility behind it. And we can always, you know, if, if Michelle comes in and contradicts what was said here, then that's a good reason not to approve it in the end, but we might as well put it out. Maybe the public will have a lot to say about it.
Absolutely.
We can take in public comments, anyone who wants to public, and talk about them afterwards. So, because it's not an absolutely done deal, it's just putting it out for public comment and letting the 30-day clock start. So, that's, that's where I am.
So you should make a motion?
Okay. So, I'm trying to think how we word the motion. I move, it's been so long since we brought a policy forward. I move to approve policy KBDA, accessibility and return of student answers, student work in test questions, to go to public comment.
I think you're approving.
Approve it and put it out for public comment.
So you're, so you're saying approving the pol, so you're include, so you're including approving the policy as part of that?
Well, don't you have to to put it out for public comment?
I think that's the process.
Right, and then you said we approve it again at the end. I was just following what you said.
I feel like we never approved after. We've never approved twice.
Yeah, I don't think, I think you make the motion to put it out for public comment, and then in 30 days you actually approve the, the policy.
I think that's correct.
That's what we've done before.
Oh, okay, so then I move that we, because we have to put it out for public comment, right?
Yeah, we only never, we only don't do it if it's like a, like in COVID, we didn't for some emergency.
So, so this motion is to put it out for public comment and run the 30-day clock?
But we had to approve.
I think you approved the language.
Okay.
And put it out for public comment.
Okay. Would you like me to make a motion?
I mean, what, we just approved, we just, well, it was a little bit different because it was on.
Okay, so I move that we approve the language of policy KBDA as presented by the policy subcommittee for, to be put out for public comment for the 30-day period and be re-reviewed at the end of that. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm going to abstain.
I'm also abstaining. I'm abstaining. I know Ellen's point and that it's, we're just, the motion is just for public comment, but given the conversation, I wouldn't feel comfortable approving it without further consensus. My concern is, what I feel is a lack of consensus as of this point.
And I'm abstaining because of the word approve the language. I would vote for it if it was putting out for public comment, so, only because, well, you know why, I've told you.
Okay.
I meant just approve this version.
I got, I got, but I, I just have a trouble with it. But it passes, so that's fine. So it goes out for public comment, which is great. So it gets posted for public comment.
And, and I would like the policy subcommittee to ask Michelle to come talk to us.
Sure.
As soon as possible.
Yeah.
I think she may be coming to the next school committee meeting.
Great, so we can put it on the agenda for the next article.
And if we, for our questions about this, should we direct them right to Michelle?
I will confirm that with her, but I think, because I did have to cut out of meetings and miss some because of other school committee commitments, so I don't have, like, every bit of the puzzle and she does.
Just, just, do you have the composition and, and task of the task force?
It's right here, it's in the report.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, it tells you exactly who's on it. Here, I'll, I'll forward it to, we'll sponsor. Does anyone need it?
I'll take it.
Perry, should we contact Michelle with questions?
Yeah, I would say Michelle's probably the best person to have questions.
Okay.
Sending it to Ellen, Erin, anyone else? Okay. So, you know, for out for public comments, since we haven't done them for so long, you kind of, you have to tell Diane to put it on the website, so for out for public comment, and then you have to keep track of the 30 days.
Okay.
Otherwise it'll just sit out there. And then bring it back to the committee.
Okay. Any other, anything else related to that, or should we move on to the next item for policy? Because we can move on to the next item.
Oh, no, the other.
Other policy item? Oh, yeah, this one, I'm hopeful that we should have limited discussion and be able to just approve because there is one tweak we have to make because TCW is now part of our district officially, and it was pointed out to me, Ellen, and Perry that this was something, and we said, oh, policy, we have a policy on class size. So we just need to approve the addition of pre-K TCW Act 15, which was the number I was given, to be added to policy IIB class size.
So would it have the same, I don't remember the exact language, but I know there's qualifying language, that it's a suggest, it's, it's not an absolute.
So I just literally added it to the list.
Yeah, there's no change.
There's no change other than pre-K TCW 15.
So the prior policy, it had just started with elementary and you added pre-K ahead on top of that? Okay.
That's the one, too.
Great.
And that is it.
Great, then I'm going to move, but wait, oh, is there any discussion?
Nope, not.
I'm going to move to, do you want me to say that, approve the language? Approve the language and put out for public comment, policy IIB. Yes? Is it?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? No one's opposed, motion passes. Let's see, we have about a little less than, do we want to try to approve the consent agenda?
Yes, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Great, is there a second? Great, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? No one's opposed, motion passes.
Can we manage not anticipated?
Yeah, sure, let's do matter, yeah. Any matters not anticipated? None? Okay, great.
What are we going to do then?
We can go back and do the things that Perry crossed out.
Yeah, we only have what, like, less than, I guess we can just, we can hang out. Thanks. If anyone needs a break?
Okay.
There's brownies.
There are brownies on the floor next to me.
I think when Chris asked you to put them on the ground, Jess, he was really just trying to get them hidden.
So, no, so I didn't eat them.
So this is related to the meeting we took? I mean, the vote?
Yeah. So what I'll do is upload that and I'll get it from the select board tomorrow and then get another female.
Okay. Great. Perfect, thank you. Appreciate it.
Oh, it's right here, sorry.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. And that's my.
Oh, do people need copies of the papers?
I found one from last night because I circled.
I have mine too. Yeah, I do too.
Did you say you want one?
I'm right up here.
I got to get my questions. I think I have them in here.
You guys are good.
I'm good, thank you.
It's only going to be, it's the same, an hour, right?
Point blank, you know?
I think we should make them.
That's what I'm watching. I have so many ideas for it. Big old tart. Right on the.
For 26. And maybe we can just tell her that she's coming anyway, because Karen said she's coming for. Those two.
Oh, yeah.
I didn't either.
She's like, it's great.
That's for letting me know, because otherwise I'd be like. Yeah, right?
I was in. I should say. T-shirt and I was like, they may all just go.
I literally. Just probably matters.
So what does the camera look like while they?
I'm usually dead center. When I look at big cameras. So she could sit.
Sure, if you would like, yeah, you could spare.
I don't mean to put you on the.
And I can scooch over, maybe turn over the.
Yeah.
We'll lose the name tag, so there's no confusion. Sorry, the table setup's. Okay, so. We're trying to make it a little more.
Bye, Ellen. No, this is better, it's more like last night.
Yeah, yeah, no, this is definitely. So we'll start our interview of Dr. Mitch Connolly for the acting superintendent candidate interview. And Dr. Connolly, I know that, so we've all introduced ourselves to you. And if you want to just briefly introduce yourself to us and tell us a little bit about yourself. And then after that, we're gonna go around, we have about 10 questions. And we're just gonna go around, each member's gonna go around, take turns asking our questions. And then we'll just take it from there.
Okay, so Mitch Connolly, I'm currently the superintendent of the Weston Public Schools. I've been in the Weston Public Schools for eight years, I started out there as the director of student services. I started my career as a teacher in Compton, California, as a special educator and spent just a little bit of time there and then came back and was a special educator in both private schools in Massachusetts, as well as a general educator in Watertown, Massachusetts, before entering into administration. I had decided, I started this work at a very early age, at like 14, I decided I really wanted to be in education. And so I've sort of followed that path along and have had many amazing opportunities, not the least of which has been my last eight years in the Weston Public Schools. I guess I'd just add, I'm a mom of two, a 23-year-old and a 22-year-old. My 23-year-old is in Columbia, I just had the opportunity to go and visit her, she's serving in the Peace Corps. She's been gone for, she's been gone for six, over six months and to be able to see her was just an amazing experience for me as a mother. And I have a son who's 22, who lives in the Boston area. And I'm a lifelong resident, I raised my children there and I still reside there.
It's nice to meet you, thank you. All right, I'll start out with the first question.
Okay.
So if you don't mind, just in your own words, explain the role of the superintendent. What do you see as the most important priorities? Do you see Weyland as having different priorities than other districts? And if you could just elaborate on those items.
Sure, I think, is this a pre-COVID or post-COVID?
Right?
Question, sort of. You can make it all of our jobs.
Make your answer a hybrid answer.
Sure, I get, not to really belate about it, but I think like really, all of our jobs have changed in this field. Your jobs, the teachers that are here, administrative jobs have changed, I think, since that time. And this normalcy that we have now is somewhat more familiar. But as a superintendent, what I believe that my job is somewhat of a CEO of, if we were to take a business model. But we're not a business, right, we don't make, we don't make wages, we are people business. We take care of children and provide them the greatest opportunities that we can. So, but that being said, as a role of superintendent, I would be responsible for making sure that the school system, the district, that runs smoothly, making sure that I'm aware of the finances, making sure that I'm aware of the professional development opportunities, making sure that I'm aware of the student achievement, making sure that we have equity as a significant lens. And always students, I often say all means all, so all means all is all children, all the time, every day. That means just those students that struggle, those students that achieve the highest levels. Every student that comes across our threshold as a public school system, we're responsible for, so being able to provide that opportunity. I also see myself as an advocate in this role, an advocate for administration and a supporter of administration, so that those people can rely on me as a resource, so that they can then support the teachers in the building, so that they can do the most critical work, which is working directly with our students. And that's really the work that, as I said, is most critical in the work that we all are in this for, that I've entered into this for, is to make sure that we're able to do that. So I am also then an advocate for teachers to be sure that they have the resources that they need. Not only the resources of sort of the brick and mortar and the paper and pen, but also the resources to be able to continue to grow as educators and be able to fulfill their own, themselves, so that they can then meet the needs of their students. Because we all, education continually changes, you know, people often talk about it being cyclical. I agree with that, but we also now, we're looking at things like AI and other issues that we also need to provide our educators, our administrators and all of us the opportunity to continue to grow and build in many significant areas. So I consider my, I consider that role really important. And certainly, you know, as I, as I started this conversation, we came into this business for students. So my, really my number one role is to make sure that students remain at the center of all of our work and all of our decisions. And so being an advocate and a provider of resources for students, making sure that those students have the most opportunity that they possibly can, is something that I see a significant role of the superintendent be. So not only a manager or a CEO, but also someone who is, I consider myself a relational leader, who believes that relationships are the most critical, whether that be with the school committee, which is a critical, we need to have a critical and important relationship. You are the conduit between the community, you are the governing board that hires the superintendent, hires, prepares the budget, and also knows this community best, or better than most, and have chosen to volunteer your time to do this work. So I think that we, I think that in that role, in this role, we have to make sure that we are, you know, making sure that the students are at the center as much as we can, while, you know, judging all the other laws of being fiscally responsible, et cetera.
Great. The acoustics in here are really bad. Feel free to like.
Talk about, I can actually talk pretty loud, but I don't wanna.
Sajal, can you hear?
Yeah.
I think you're like closer than I could.
Okay, I'm happy to talk louder. Sure.
Our staff and families have been through a lot in the past few years. How do you envision working with the administration staff and families to improve morale and trust? Please give specific examples, including effective communication with stakeholders. And how would you work and communicate with the school committee?
Okay. So I think that as I started, we've all been through a lot through COVID and we've seen an unprecedented change in administration in many districts. So you certainly have experienced that here. There's many other districts just in our neighboring communities that have also felt some changes. So I think that one of the most important things for anyone that comes into this position as an acting superintendent is to really to listen and to gather information. I think that the, I'm trying to recall all the parts of that question, but.
Happy to.
One more time, if you would.
Yeah, sure. Our staff and families have been through a lot in the past few years. How do you envision working with administrator staff and families to improve morale and trust? Please give specific examples, including effective communication with stakeholders and how would you work and communicate with the school committee?
Okay, thank you very much, I think that, I thought that a little bit, but I just wanted to be sure. So I think that having been, Olive's having been through much over the last short order, you know, what seems like a short order, but it seems like forever as well, these last four or five years. Is that one of the most important things for acting superintendent to come in is to really listen. And I think that that is gonna have to be in many ways, because what we've learned is that we need to hear from multiple stakeholders, all, everyone possible. So I would foresee in, in other instances, I would have, you know, I have a number of coffees or a number of forums to hear feedback, I'd send out surveys, to gather information, all of those things are really important. But I think given what we've gone through, and I, you know, I know some of what you've gone through, but I can just even speak from the community that I'm in, in the community that I live in. One of the things that I've found to be most effective is to have much smaller group meetings. So to have groups, you know, no larger than 24 and just have multiple meetings. And I think that part of who would, I would want in that group, in that, in those meetings would be many members of the administrative team, so that the whole entire administrative team could hear the needs, the wants, the wonderings, the concerns of all of these constituents, including, you know, including the community, teachers, the, you know, certainly the school committee working closely with you, I would hope that possibly one of you would be, you know, would could, you know, figure it out and parse it out, that you'd also be in some of these meetings where we could hear from these various groups of peoples, that, so that we could really gather, so that the job, whoever comes in as the acting superintendent is one to gather a lot of information, gather that data, and then part of this closing the loop as well is getting that information that we've gathered from people that we've asked, we've devoted, we've asked people to give of their time, their precious time, to give us information, gather that information in a way that's comprehensive, and then share that back, information back, not just in June, but actually at least three to four times during the year in various ways. I also think it's really important to not only hold those smaller group meetings that, I'm trying to keep putting my voice up. I'm not, I'm usually not very quiet, but I'm trying to be also measured because I tend to talk, speak very quickly. So I think that giving that feedback loop and having the opportunity to have people hear what they've said to you in their, in your responses, and then helping to make a plan. I feel like as an acting superintendent, my job in some ways is to grab the baton from, from the district right now, gather information, gather data, share information, meet with people, understand what's happening in the district. Certainly, there's some, many worries and concerns that I've seen, but I also know that there's amazing things that are happening here in Weyland. I think that we need to celebrate those things as we're in these times, we need to make sure that we're celebrating the really wonderful things that are happening, as we also tend to the pain and the loss and the changes that have occurred in education for not only for Weyland specifically, but for everyone and also then for Weyland specifically, what the changes that you have gone through and the changes that you will continue to go through over the next several months. So I think it's most critically important that this person takes the baton, gathers information from those that are the most knowledgeable, those that work here, those that work with our children, those that have volunteered their time, those that lead our buildings and lead our district, and then make a plan, so that we're able to move forward in a way that's productive. And so that whomever comes in into this place for a longer term would be a person who would have all that information. And although they would still come in and need to gather information, but they would have some real information that they could really step off the ground running and move forward. Welcome.
Great, I know you talked about special ed background. Was wondering if you could please describe in detail, a little bit more detail, your experience with special education services and the balance between providing what the students need and managing the cost of those services to the town?
Yeah, sure, it's always incredibly tricky. I think one of the things also since COVID is that we've all seen a significant increase in mental health needs, which has required many more students receiving and needing services and educators and others being faced with an increase in behaviors and other things that we hadn't previously seen in districts similar to Weston and Weyland. So as I said, I started out in, as a special educator, I was a special educator for a number of years. I taught morning courses on special education, I then became the assistant, the director of student services in the Weston Public Schools. One of the things that we, that I was able to do, certainly collaboratively with a team of teachers and educators, was we identified right away that we had many, many children that were at Carroll School and that we were paying for. And in part, so what we did within the first six months is we took many of our special educators and other teachers that wanted to get certified, Norton Gillingham and Wilson, and got people trained right away to build the capacity so that we could help to identify the language-based program, to build a language-based program and to meet some of the needs of those students. And it took time, and I stress that it took time, but we now have a language-based program. It got grades two to 12 in the Weston Public Schools, but it took, you know, that's taken us really eight years to get there. So we first rolled it out in the early elementary schools, because that's the most critical need in research, to get early intervention. And since then, we've been able to roll it out through 12th grade. And again, it's been a process that has had to involve teachers, has had to involve professional development. And it's really having the teachers and the administrators together, working together to make sure that, and really the families as well, because the families are the ones that have these children that are hurting, right, that are, and they're having that experience of their child not being able to read or struggling in school and then, so we need to make sure that all of these constituents are brought together. So that's one thing that we're able to do, which was certainly a cost-saving, it's hard to have a correlation, but we know that we have a number of students that are now in our language-based program. The other thing, as everyone, as I've mentioned, mental health issues. We identified about seven years ago that we needed some more significant mental health at our secondary, specifically at our secondary level. And so we had created a program there that was sort of a catch-all program at first for many students that struggled with social emotional difficulties, where they, not so much at the high school level, did they become significantly dysregulated, although a few did, but more severe depression, hospitalization. And then when, with COVID, it only became that much worse. Right, previous to COVID, what we figured out is that we actually really needed two programs and we certainly had the numbers, once we created the program, we filled up very quickly. But what we knew is we figured out we had two really different groups of students. Not so different, but different enough that we knew that we had needed two programs. One program was for students who were required an IEP and they required specialized long-term services and even some academic support in a specialized program. They were, they're still and are still fully part of the high school and take classes in the high school, but we, but they also have this home base that is a significant support. We had to branch that off into a program for students who didn't need long-term support, but needed more short-term support, for hospitalization, for whatever reason, whether that be for mental health or for other reasons. But they didn't need necessarily the long-term support, they wouldn't, they aren't necessarily on an IEP, but they needed someplace, a home place to go where they felt safe as they were transitioning back into our school. Again, once we did that and then COVID, both programs are full to capacity. We have, you know, two mental health workers and each program, we have learning assistants, we have teachers in those programs. And that's also helped us to build a community for our families and for those students and for those teachers, where there's a safe place for them to go in our school and to continue to participate in all of the extracurricular activities, the general and special education opportunities, but within, within the building of Weston High School. I do worry, and we started some of this work, but I think we would need to continue in a town like Weyland or Weston, is to really partner with schools like Weyland and Weston and create programming that we could do across districts. So maybe it's, Weyland takes, creates a program, we do it together and the program services, really high functioning, students on the autism spectrum. And then we work together and we figure out a program for students that have more cognitive needs. And what we do then is then we say, okay, Weyland is gonna house this program, Weston is gonna house this program, and we're gonna work together and we're gonna have our students go to each of these programs, which will allow us. We just don't have the cohorts often, and that often causes us to not be able to serve our students in a cohort, then therefore not giving them a least restrictive environment and then not allowing them to stay within the neighborhood school, so they're, in their town school. So it doesn't alleviate that, but at least sort of a Weyland, a Weston, a Weyland, a Lincoln, a Weyland. It still feels like it's close and it still feels familiar to families. At least that's what we found, as we have worked with some with Wellesley very successfully. We haven't been in the builder program, but we've certainly been able to utilize their programs.
Thank you.
Thank you. They did something like that when I was teaching at Sudbury, where they would go to different, some kids would be in different districts.
Okay, yes, it's.
Familiar model.
Yes.
Why are you interested in pursuing the acting superintendent position in Weyland in July of 2023 specifically? And what do you believe you can contribute to the Weyland Public Schools, our students, staff and families and the Weyland community in that position if you are hired? And how would you prepare for starting in Weyland? And how would you prepare for starting in Wayland?
Okay. So why my interest? So I have been in education for a really long time, 30-plus years. I've been in Weston for eight years, it's been an amazing experience, I've worked with an incredible team, I've worked with administrators, I've worked with, you know, some of the most talented educators, and, you know, really strong school committees. And after COVID, and what that entailed, and being in a district for eight years, I decided that it's time for me to sort of take stock in my own professional career, and what my next steps are. And, but not, I'm, I'm a doer, and I could, need to keep working, and I feel like I have a skill set, having the experience that I have as a superintendent, and also my experience as a special educator, given your needs right now, to come in and really help the district begin to, as I said earlier, begin to heal, but also, you know, take, take some ownership of things that are going well, and to continue that work. I think that, as I said, what I, I think the other part was, what I offer is, I offer the experience, I offer being from a like district, it's very, when I was looking through a lot of your work, a lot of the paperwork, your, your strategic plan, and your budget, things look and sound familiar to me. It's not, we're, we are different, we definitely have unique qualities, but we also have things that are very similar. You guys are a little bit larger, you beat us in football games more often than not, at least, but I think that we have many similarities in our communities, although certainly there are some differences, and I think that coming from a similar district, that I think that I could come in, use my skill set, to help to, as I said, gather information, gather data, share that data with everyone, so that whomever comes in after me would be able to be, continue that, you know, pass that baton and come in, knowing the district in a way that, that I don't know it yet, but I think that I could, you know, certainly looking forward to. I think that one of the things that I would do, as I said, is I would go certainly on a listening tour, but I wouldn't do it solo, as I said, I consider myself a relational leader, so I think the most important thing is to develop, develop those relationships. So being able to have, you know, meetings with people, offering myself to have meetings one-on-one, in small groups, and, you know, larger forums, forums, Zoom, I think there's multiple ways that we need to make sure that we can get as many people in as possible. I think that we, I think that I, that I would need to make myself quite visible, so that I would need to be in schools, I would need to be at events, people would need to see me in their classrooms, families would need to see me. So I think that as I enter in, I would have an entry plan, which would include many of these things, but, you know, meeting with, you know, all of the people that I've spoken about, but also fire, police, town leadership, just to really have a better, full understanding. So again, that I could share that information with everyone, so that everyone understands that perspective and communicate that, and I think that's going to be really key, is the communication of that information, and be able to have a plan. And part of that entry plan really would be to meet as many people as I possibly can within the first few months, and then continue those meetings in more substantive ways as the year goes on, as we, you know, as we go through the process, as you go through the process of finding a permanent person for this position.
Wayland families are looking for a superintendent who will listen and put student needs first. Wayland teachers are accustomed to autonomy. How can you balance relationships with both families and our educators, so that our students get what they need for success? Please provide examples from your experience.
Sure. So in one year, one of the things I think that wouldn't be my role here, I don't believe, would be to make any significant changes. I think really it is gathering information and gathering data. I know that there are some things that need to be tended to, certainly. I know that there's some piloting of some math curriculum that I think that I'd, you know, want to support continuing, but certainly would want feedback from administration leaders on that. I know that special education certainly needs to be looked at, with the 48% increase in costs, I think that that's certainly something that needs to be looked at, and possibly some changes need to be made there, but really, I don't see myself as a significant change agent in this time, because, as I said, not, the programming that we created on special education took eight years. Over that same period of time, we aligned our elementary curriculum, which took that same amount of time, which, what, and the way that we did that, it was, it's not fully aligned, and it's not fully implemented in North City, because all of these educational changes, like everywhere, take time. But what we did was, we involved community members in those decisions, not the decisions around curriculum, but when we were making decisions, and when we had decided on a curriculum that we had piloted, then we had held forums to say, and here's our reasons why. And most often, the people that are presenting that are both administrators and teachers, because those are the experts in that work. And so I think that that's one of the things that, that I would look to do, but again, in, in the first year, would be to only to, to look at special education, given that significant need, and then to continue whatever initiatives, I know that, only because I know that you guys are piloting a leucotic math, as are we, and I know you're piloting some other programs, and so I think that having that opportunity. And I think one of the other things that possibly we may have the opportunity to do, that would be wonderful, I think, is the opportunity for teachers and administrators from Wayland to go to some other districts that have implemented some of the programming that has, that has been effective, so that they can spend time to be able to learn and understand what might have happened, it might, what, what, what might have worked, and where were the pitfalls? Because there's, there's lots of people that have made significant changes in curricula over the years, and certainly nothing to, and nothing to, and we need to be really measured in that. At the same time, I think, having gone through this, and I would leave this to my, to the teachers that I work with in Weston, is that in that process, what I don't want to lose completely, certainly, is the, is the, the real art of teaching, and the, and the, some of that really independence that teachers have, that, that they then are able to reach students, in ways that if we strip them of that, then we aren't going to get that same piece of sense of belonging from students, right? So, because as I said, I'm a relational leader, I don't know that I've met many teachers that aren't relation people, that don't try to make significant relationships with students. And one of the ways they're able to do that is by bringing themselves, and we want, we want our students to bring their whole selves to the district, we also want teachers to be able to do that. So in order to do that, we need to bring them along in the process, and as I said, it's, it's a balance, but I think that those can be made, as long as people are included in the exchange processes. And as I said, I don't know that in one year's time, that would be, make a lot of sense, just hopefully laying the groundwork for some of that to happen.
Thank you.
The committee takes its anti-racism resolutions seriously. We have families of color who live in our town, and who live in Boston. Please describe specific ways in which you've provided advancement for students of color and other marginalized student populations in your previous districts, and share what actionable items you have taken to improve communication, acceptance, and ensure all families, and more specifically, families of color and other marginalized groups feel welcome in our schools.
So I would say that, you know, if we're talking from our Boston families or other families of color, I think that Wayland and Weston particularly are particularly challenging, difficult, communities to enter into. They're, the numbers are quite small, and we're, you know, of a, it's, as a white educator, I, you know, you feel that you have that responsibility and a position of power. I think that one of the things that I did when I, after a couple of years when I was in Weston, is I flipped a position at central office to be the diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging person. Their title was diversity and professional development. And so what that person was able to do, given their skill set, is they were able to provide training in social-emotional learning, which impacts all children, but certainly helps us to understand the learning needs of all students and others with responsive classroom. And so now, our K through, all educators through K through eight, including our bus drivers, our lunch monitors, our learning assistants have all been trained, and so there's a consistent language that's used around it. There's no one answer, but responsive classroom has been one that I've used in a number of places that I've worked, and it, and it's been quite successful, and there's no one answer. In addition, that person has also been able to lead our, our work around DEI, and when I, we've been able to, as first starting as our administrative team, and working on looking at ourselves, and doing self-assessments as, not our co-leadership team, and it has changed over the time that I've been there, is white, but really looking at our white privilege, and really researching that, and seeing where we are and who we are, and looking at Hammond's work, and Culture Responsive Teaching in the Brain was a whole book read for our administrative team, and then it became a whole book read for our faculty and staff, and those have been, over time, are now run by both administrators and by teachers, those groups, and those are part of the PD day, so at least once a month, some of that work is done. We are also now looking at, we began and have delved into unconscious bias, another piece of strong literature that's changing, that is, that can help to bring insight into, into the experiences of others, and to try to create a place where people can belong. I, the, another thing that's happened at our high school of late, is, over the last couple of years, is there's been a group of leaders defined broadly, so not just the group of leaders that are just the captains, or just those that have been voted, but those that are leaders in other ways, that are identified, self-identified, or identified by teachers that might say, you know, sort of quiet, but they have a lot to say, and they, that group has been brought together at the high school, and it has made some pretty significant changes around some of our, many things, but some of the rules around, you know, our bathroom usage, and making sure that we have bathrooms that everyone feels safe to use. We, proper signage, you know, a push to make sure that people are being respectful of all students, making, you know, whenever possible. Obviously, we're working with children, and our job is, our students are going to make mistakes, and our job as teachers and educators is to help them to learn from those mistakes. But I think that that group has been a powerful place where we've begun. All of this work is being done, though, in Weston or at K to 12. And again, it's really the, part of that was being, flipping from our position, you know, flipping a central office position to focus on that work, so that we could move that work forward. This is a lifelong process, certainly as a white woman, this is something that I'll continue to do in my professional career and beyond. So I think that that's some of the work, other work that we've done, similar to some of the work that you guys have done. We have a summer program that we have for uprising middle schoolers and rising ninth graders, that was, and we also have, we also provided buses this year for our, for the summer school that was located, Boston College High School, which made us, which allowed a, a high percentage of our students to get, be able to get to the program. We are able to provide two to three late buses, so that our students, no matter what, can get home from any event that they participate in. And so we've tried to do as many things, we have, we have affinity groups for many groups that are, meet both in-school hours and out-of-school hours, so we've tried to create as many spaces that people can feel safe in. We've also looked at the data on looking at how we can get students, Latina X and Black students into higher-level courses, and we're looking, and, and we've been able to achieve some success in that, not to the level that we want, and so we're now looking at what possible things can we do, you know, we, we have our sixth, seventh, and eighth grade math classes are all leveled, and is there a way, there's been districts that have been very successful in not having that happen, over time? And then that, those being gatekeeper courses allows people to, allows students of, all sorts of different students to be able to take chances. I think the other thing that we need to be sure that we're able to provide is that extra support, knowing that if we're asking students to take a chance, and to maybe be a person that, only one person that looks like them in an entire class, then they need to have supports when they leave that course, when they leave that classroom, when they go into other spaces in order to, in order to feel safe, and sort of process what they've experienced in order to feel empowered to do it. When I was in at Newton North, which was a few years ago, they started a program called Do-over Legacy Scholars, named after an incredible Black educator, and it started out, and it was really small, and it was really set to have someplace for students to go to, students to call, X Black students to go to, that were wanting to take higher classes, to be together with a faculty member that would support them, and really, it was a lot of emotional support, you can do this, you're able to do this, I know that you can do this. And also, still, also some academic support if necessary, which we were able to get. And now, that program has grown, you know, then it's time, over 10 years, to be, you know, well over 30 students, students from, many students from Boston, many students from Newton, that is a place where people feel and are championed as being in the right place, being successful, being capable. And so I think there's many ways that we can do it, more challenging in smaller districts, but I think there's ways that we can do it, and I think that it can, and, and, and it could start. I think that that's something that could start even in the next year.
Could you provide a concrete example from your past experience as a superintendent, where you were faced with a difficult conflict involving at least two or more parties, or a challenging time for the district? Describe the nature of the conflict or challenge, how you approached it, and what was the result of your intervention? And if you had it to do all over again, what would you have done differently?
I, you know, certainly could start with COVID and all of that we did, we were able to get our students in, elementary school students in five days a week with the support of the town and the school committee, and we created a program that we called Earls, and it wasn't a childcare program, but what it allowed was for our students, for our teachers who had students in other districts that weren't able to have students in five days a week, they were able to bring their students to the Weston Public Schools, and they got support while their students were online. But I think that, that so many people did so many amazing things in COVID, and we were, so I'd love to hear what, what happened here, for sure, but those are some things that we did. But I don't think that that's really what you're asking, you're sort of asking where I've erred, and how did, and how'd that go? So, you know, we're, we're human, we're in the human business, things don't always go well despite the best intentions. Earlier this fall, after a two-year process, that included a number of teachers, administrators, we decided to roll out a standard-based, two aspects of standard-based grading program. So we, our intention was to roll out a, at the secondary level, we already had standard-based grading at the elementary level, was to roll out a retake policy, that you could retake up to a B, and rather than a zero-to-100 grading scale, it would be a 50-to-100 scale. So we had done work in the spring, in the summer, through the school year, and in the spring, and currently, at, in both the middle school and the high school in Weston, there's not necessarily consistency across grading, and so some departments allow retakes, actually most, most allow some sort of retake, some were doing a 50-to-zero scale, some were not, and so those are the two things that we're trying to roll out. And what we didn't do, although we had done it in many other things that we've rolled out, we, I didn't, I will own it as a superintendent, see that this was going to be such a significant change for our district, and when it was, it was presented at school committee, there wasn't a lot of response, and then, as it trickled out to the community, we got a significant response that wasn't positive at all, so that was, people that were really upset that we would go and put forward such a change without going through a process. We had felt that we were in a process, right, a fish in water, we had lived it, we had done a lot of the research, but unlike in other initiatives that we had done, we didn't include the community in ways that we had previously done. So we first, the immediate thing we did was, we held a large community forum, in which there were well over 100 people there, and then, as a result of that, we knew that we needed, I made the decision that we needed to have many smaller forums, so that we could have conversations about rationale. There's a lot of misinformation that people also got, not for any of the wrong reasons, because we didn't communicate it well, right? So the misinformation and the vacuum of communication, then people are gonna, you know, make, they're gonna make, they're gonna fill that vacuum, right, with information. So we, as, through that process, we rolled back the standard-based grading process, which was the right thing, and to do it again would be to go through the process that we did for the start time, or we've gone through two processes of doing a multi-year strategic plan, which the last Or we've gone through two processes of doing a multi-year strategic plan, which the last strategic plan, we did, had over 1,000 touches on it from everyone, from students to faculty to community members to beyond just families that had students in schools. And so that's what we had done for those other initiatives. And so unfortunately, this did not get rolled out appropriately, so I would do it much more similarly to the other, still contentious rollouts, but were much more well-received in the inclusion of multiple stakeholders. Best intentions.
Yeah.
Okay, moving to budget. So Wayland's facing a very tight fiscal 20, FY '24 school budget as $1.2 million was cut from the original recommended budget. A large part of our budget increase next year includes what you had mentioned, the 48% increase in special education expenses. What's your experience working with an extremely tight budget, creative solutions to working within the budget to provide the necessary services for all our students and budgeting for future years? And do you have any experience with NSBA building projects as we've submitted a statement of interest for an elementary building project?
Okay, so let me, let me take the first one first?
Yes.
Because it's an easy one. I've not, so that's an easy.
You're talking about the MSB.
The NSB. So I've not been part of that process. I, what I have been through, at the case house, which is our central office, was rebuilt, but we had an expert on our school committee, as well as the planning board and the historical committee that really took the reins of that, of that do-over. So I've not been a part of that project. I've been a part of a couple of punch list buildings where I arrived right after they were done, and they were, and, you know, both Newton North and the Field School, which is a four or five elementary school in Weston, had just been completed by the time I got there. And there were a number of things, when you, even when you complete a building that need to, that aren't quite done, not unlike if you do something at your own home. So things that need to get done. So I've not been a part of that. The first part of your question, tight budgets. Weston has been in a situation over the last many years, prior to me being there, of having, of declining enrollment. And so in six of the eight years that I've been there, we've need to make, we've needed to make reductions. Certainly, SRR funding helped. One of the things for a little bit, but I do anticipate, we've been very careful and I think, not quite prudent, but I do believe that we will have a cliff from not having the SRR funding any longer next year. I don't think it will be a significant cliff, and again, that we've been careful and planful, but I, but I do worry about that. So in our time, we've had to make cuts, in my time, I've had to make cuts with really tight budgets, where we have had to cut many FTEs. And as I started this interview to say, as a relational leader and as, in a people business, is that we, it's not, you know, it's not the corporate world where you're just sort of like led to the door and here's your computer, right? So we are so emotionally tied into this because it's children, is that we know that we need to make cuts, even if it's someone who has only been with us for a year or two, because they're the lowest person in the seniority, is it that still, they've made a connection to the school and the school, the personnel feel it. So not only this person that is not, does no longer has a job because of cuts, but also the people that are left behind feel it. And so it's the idea of that being as transparent as you can, being as collaborative as you can, taking it long as you can. It's still, no one wants to make the cuts, and so no one feels good. I can't say that when I leave these meetings with either the department heads or the chairs or my administrative team, and does anyone leave there feeling really good about what happened? But I think what happens is at least they feel that they've been included in the process, an inevitable process that we need to do, which is to be fiscally responsible and given these times of higher inflation and higher costs for, for our, for our electricity and for our gas and all of those things that are beyond our control. I think that we just all need to be in it together, understanding what that means and be as transparent as we possibly can, include as many people as we can. As I said, it's not that people leave the table, or that the teachers or administrators or even community members. We have been able to, though, by working together to this point, we haven't had to impact programs for students, class size, policies, or any sort of opportunity. So we've not had to make any, we had, we've had to make cuts that have impacted sort of the daily work of people and sort of the class size has increased, but not, we're still within the bounds, we're still within our, you know, not above 24 at our secondary level, not above, you know, with the exception of physical education, and not above 21, 22 at our, at our elementary level. So we've been able to maintain those and find efficiencies, but they're still in the past. So it's a process, so in, yes.
Great, thank you.
What are your thoughts on planning for school safety? What is your position on police involvement in the schools? And please give examples from previous districts.
So school safety is paramount for everyone. I think we saw that certainly in COVID, when our teachers and administrators were asked to come back into buildings and we didn't have vaccinations, and we didn't really know what was happening, and that was really scary. And so we did whatever we could. We got air purifiers and fixed our ventilations and did all of those things. And then we look again, and every day, it seems like on TV, we now know that the number one killer of children is guns. And so, you know, it's, it's still rare, but it's still real, right? So now we see it on television, our children, our teachers, our administrators, all know that that's part of what it is. So since, even before I started, but certainly two years later, we have, you know, probably like seven years ago, we started a pretty robust safety team that we work in collaboration with our police and fire department. It's led by some of our administrators, our teachers are on it, we have, at times have had parents on it. And we have done significant improvements to safety. We've added, we've added cameras, we've added more security as far as, I was going to try to find my tag, you know, as far as increase, you know, all, you know, our, when I started, our doors weren't all locked, and often with, they were locked and they were, they were tagged open. We've added more swipe cards so that our doors can be locked, all of our doors can be locked at all time. We've added many other measures. We've added safety buttons in every, in multiple places in the school that can be accessed so that it immediately goes to the emergency responders. We have trained all of our elementary school educators in, in safe schools. And we've also trained all of our secondary students and faculty in Alice training. So we have done that throughout our school district. We had, did take a hiatus and had to switch it to the safety, as I said, for COVID, because that was a different, our safety team just switched and we had to do other safety measures. But we're now back in a situation where we're continuing to look at increasing the safety of our schools in ways to protect everyone that enters our schools, whether that be our families, teachers, administrators, and certainly, most importantly, our students. Because if we aren't feeling safe, we're not going to be doing our best work, whether we're adults or children. We've implemented a number of other safety measures that I'd just rather not discuss because I don't want people to know what those safety measures are. But we have, it's been really a collaborative process, and I think that we are in a place that we still need to continue, but it has become a priority as it has been for many, many districts. Oh, the police.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry. So we have had a SR, we've had a, we had a school resource officer, SRO, for, I want to say, five years. And we have a 1.0, and it's divided between two F, two, two people, so it's 0.5 FTEs. One person focuses on the elementary and one had focused primarily on the secondary. But as we've moved through the last many years, it's really become a partnership between these two individuals who have been, and as time has gone on, there was certainly not full support in the community at first. We had, certainly had some pushback on having resource offices at the buildings. And although there's still not, we don't have unanimous support, that as, they've become an incredible resource for us, and they have made connections with students in our building, they are in our buildings often, they are also a resource to us as administrators to, if we have a really escalated situation that we need to involve police, but we still remain the people who get to make the decisions, whether they're there to support us. They've been there when we've had to do evacuations, they've been there when we've just needed some support and advice on some, you know, legal matters that are more police matters than they would be with legal counsel. So as time has gone on, they have become a much more integral part of our team. And one of the ways that they've done that is through our safety teams, where they provided a tremendous amount of, they begin to provide a tremendous amount of training for our, for our faculty and staff as well. So it's changed over time and evolved, and I think it's gotten much better, and I just anticipate that it will continue to get better. In my experience, prior to that, I've almost always had a youth officer, and it's been a very positive experience.
Lastly, is there anything else that you would like to tell us about yourself?
That's an interesting question. I don't scoot it off, even though I would like to. Yeah, and I guess that, you know, I've chosen this profession, I love it. Some of the most fulfilling work that I've done is work on teams with, with teachers and administrators to make change for the better for all kids, and certainly those that have been marginalized. It's been part of the work of my life and, and my dedication, and certainly I, for students that have disabilities, has been a passion of mine and work of mine. I feel that I, you know, I will continue to do that work. It would be great if I was to do that work here. I feel like that I have a skill set as a person who really invests a lot in building, trusting relationships. Those allow us to make changes, whether those be big or small, and go both ways. But I think that that's something that's a real skill set. I know that I've mentioned that, so I don't know that that's something other, but I feel like it's really important because by doing that and enabling that with all different constituents, then really to build that trust is so important, just for schools to, to do, you know, what we, what they do both, you know, with what their, what our charge is, which is to take care of children, provide them opportunities, all the opportunities they can to be whatever, you know, whatever they would like to be in their adult life. In order to do that, we have to support all those that are supporting them, which includes families and certainly teachers and administrators.
Thank you.
Do you, do you have any, those are all of our questions. Do you have any questions for us?
Sure, I guess, one of my questions is that, from your questions, I can sort of hear some angst and worry and, and from all of you in the questions that you posed to ask. So I would love to hear about us, what's happening in Wayland, that you are now, that you're celebrating, are able to still continue to celebrate and want to, want to bring up and, and share with me about what's happening right now in the Wayland public schools that is that thing, that is what makes you guys such a wonderful district and has for a really long time.
Same. Something I would celebrate is our kids still come home happy every day. Like, they're not part of any chaos, they don't feel tension, and maybe I'm speaking for myself, like, because I could speak to my own children. And I think it speaks volumes to the work that our teachers are doing with them and their commitment to the kids and ensuring that when they're in school, they're in school, they're learning, they're, they're getting that STL support, they're getting all the supports that they need, and all the other stuff is sort of noise.
I was going to say the same thing as Jess. There's a lot of great things in Wayland, a lot of great things going on in Wayland. And with my own kids coming home, every day they come home really happy and really excited about what happened in their day. As a school committee member, where each of us are liaisons to school buildings, and as a liaison, we will go to that building and visit it a few times a year and walk around with the principal. And in those visits, the, the excitement and the joy of the children and everything that's going on is palpable, and, and it, it never wavers, no matter what concern could be raised in these questions. So it's, it's the educators, the teachers, the principals, the administrators, every day, put whatever concern might be sort of underlying in these questions aside, and do their best for our kids.
I, I remember in COVID, I had, my office looked out onto a playground at the time, and when everyone was, it was horrible, everyone was like in, so afraid. Like, it was the, my most favorite part of the day, if I was able to be there, was like to just look out the window at recess and see the children having such joy. And that was only possible because of what the teachers had created, right? That they were able to do that and be with each other, even, but they didn't always wear their masks, but I'm not going to say anything about that. I guess, I guess my, I guess my last question would be, what, what is it that you're looking for in this position, going forward for the next, as, as your acting superintendent?
I was just thinking, what did I say yesterday?
Oh, you already?
I think we're looking for someone with integrity, that's gonna come in with a collaborative mindset, that can appreciate all that our administrators and our teachers and our students and our families have been through recently, and really put on, like I say to my six-year-old, the listening hat, and kind of see what the people in the buildings and our students feel they need, and be responsive to that.
I would add to that. What you said about recognizing this as a one-year situation where you would not come in and try to change or direct or impose, and outside you would rather listen organically to the people who are here and try to gather information and set the district up for long term success with those, that effort. I think that, I was very happy for you to say that.
And I would, I would just add on top of that, I think we have a really good foundation in Wayland. It's been a really tough few years, you know, with COVID and then the things that have happened this past year. And so I think basically everything that everybody said, but I just think that, you know, moving us forward for the year with no huge changes, but just keeping us moving forward, because I do think that we'll end up in a really good place, you know, as we rebuild some of the things that need rebuilding.
Have to just give a shout out, yes, it's great in our district. We have a wonderful high school news organization who are right after you're reporting on your interview. And I just had to give them a shout out, too, because they really are, they have an amazing organization.
Great. Well, yeah, so I, I thank you for your time and consideration for this position. I'd be honored if I was chosen, and if not, certainly all the best to all of you. You guys are, it's a great community, it's a great district, and, and you're gonna be, you're gonna be okay, you're gonna be fine, you have great people with you, so. I appreciate the time.
Yeah, thank you. We really appreciate you taking the time to be here.
Sure.
Take care.
Thank you. Thank you so much, be well. Bye, take care. Yeah, you too, as well. I have my water, I don't want to. No, I got mine. Oh, I, oh, we have multiple pairs, but for those, it's fine.
Thank you so much. Nice to meet you.
Yeah, nice to meet you as well, take care, be well.
You can get out of the trash.
Is it okay if I run to the bathroom?
Go for it.
Okay. I don't. Careful. How are you?
He's outside, talking to the bitch.
Oh, really?
I'm gonna go get water.
Go for it.
Oh, really?
I'm gonna go get water.
I don't, he doesn't listen to this, but he has a. Yeah.
Water? Oh, you're just filling that up, right?
Yeah, sorry. It's hard to tell, Chris.
Okay.
Sorry.
I have a feeling it's a no, based on what I saw.
Hi.
Hi.
David.
Yes.
I'm Erin.
Hi, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Hi, I'm Jessica, nice to meet you. Nice to meet you.
Um, we just had.
We just took like a couple minutes.
You guys.
Wanna have a seat over there in the middle?
That's great. Do you guys go by, you know, school things are different, you on the formal side, informal side?
Informal.
Of course, personally, okay.
Yes, please.
That's what I am used to as well. Every teacher, I'm David, so that's, of course. Sometimes students, too.
It's amazing how that happens.
Yeah.
Sometimes my children are like, hey, Jessica. And I'm like, no. You can't come in.
But that's the only way they can get me to turn my head.
That's what they'll say. You weren't received.
Hi, I'm Chris Ryan. Nice to meet you, Chris.
Hi, nice to meet you, too. Thanks for coming here.
Sure.
Hi, Ellen Rico.
Hi, Ellen. I'm David, nice to meet you.
Just go ahead, Jess or Jessica?
Um, I, it's interchangeable for me. Just don't call her. Anyone who knew me when I was young, it's Jessica.
Hi, I'm Jamie Down.
Hi, I'm David, nice to meet you.
I didn't realize you were behind me.
I didn't either. Perry's back.
Oh, I was wondering.
I'll introduce myself when you're done.
I was just asking you a question.
I thought you left. That's what I thought, I thought him and Tom left.
All right.
I'm good.
So you had a chance to meet the school committee members here, everybody when you came in. Great. So, so this is the interview for David Fleishman for acting superintendent, so thank you for being here, we appreciate it. In terms of the lay of the land, we'll ask you to sort of introduce yourself, tell us a little bit about yourself, and then we have about 10 questions or so that we're going to ask, and we're just gonna go take turns, the school committee members going around the table, each asking a question or two. And then we'll just sort of take it from there.
Great. And do we have a, I always like to look at clocks to do, is there a time? Clock is. Oh, there, I'm sorry, I don't, I just don't look, are you on a time schedule or? I'm concise, but I just wanna, you know.
Well, we have like 55.
Yeah, about 55.
That's just good to know in terms of, in terms of clock management.
Feel free to tap my phone if you need to.
Oh, great.
The public camera is right behind that gentleman right there.
Yeah, we're on Wayland.
Okay.
That's what we call it.
The Wayland TV channel.
Excellent.
Yes. So, yeah, if you wanna just start out and tell us about yourself and introduce yourself, and then we'll dive into the, the 10 questions.
Great. Thanks, it's nice to meet you all, and nice to be here. A little bit about me, my name is David Fleishman, and I've been a superintendent of schools for 18 years. I was superintendent in Newton for 12, and my career has been back and forth between New York and Massachusetts. I've lived half my life in one place, half in the other. I taught in New York City and then worked in Westchester County in two districts. I was a superintendent in Chappaqua before going to Newton. I loved being a superintendent, and I always thought I would be a superintendent, and then about a little over a year ago, I had an opportunity to be, to run a, a large nonprofit organization that was focused on workforce development, adult education, working with immigrants and refugees, and it was a wonderful organization. And so I, I became the chief executive officer, and one thing I always loved about being a superintendent is the sense of community. We're with people all the time. And while it was a great organization, it was a Zoom job, 60% Zoom. And when you, when you work in education, you know, it's one of the areas that is still fully in-person. And as a superintendent, I'm in schools all the time with teachers and kids, and love meeting families, and, and supporting administrators, and I missed it. Every hour, I missed being a superintendent, even though there's some wonderful aspects of the organization. So about six weeks ago, I made the decision, I wanna go back to education. And it's interesting, 'cause I, I spent some time talking to some superintendents before doing so, because the work is so hard right now. I mean, it is, it is so hard on so many different levels, regardless of your role in education. And I knew that going in, and I know how hard it is to be a superintendent, I know how hard it is to be a teacher, a school committee member, I mean, you name it, it's really, really hard, teaching assistant. And yet, I miss being part of communities, and I love being part of communities, and I love the challenge of the work. One thing I, I think that I pride myself on is supporting adults, and that's something that districts need more than ever. And when I think of Wayland and supporting adults and how important that is, that's something that, that I wanna do and, and go back to. I, I know you have, you know, challenges here, and I, I embrace challenges, and I think that, you know, it's been particularly hard on, on the adults here, and, and I know that, and I think, thinking about strategies to support adults and to support leaders here in Wayland, when I think of, you know, I, I think the last time I was in this building was Paul Stein's retirement party. And I thought about that, coming over here and where things have gone since Paul left. And I'm gonna be, I'm, I'm candid, so it's been really hard since Paul left. And, you know, my history with Wayland goes back, I was thinking, 12 years ago, a Wayland school committee member called me and said, I wanna get your advice on the superintendent search. And I said, Paul Stein. And I said, he will be fantastic, Paul is my deputy superintendent, and he will be a perfect match for Wayland. And I think part of the responsibility of an acting superintendent is setting this community up for a successful superintendent. It's one of the most important things that an interim superintendent can do, because Wayland needs a successful long-term superintendent, and it's really important to have a successful superintendent search. And I look at part of this role as helping the community do that. I consulted lots of districts informally about superintendent searches, because I know that the stress that the system's under, certainly on, on the staff side, and also on the community side as well. And so that's an introduction to me, but I thought I would weave in what, what I see as some of the challenges here, and certainly I have faced so many challenges in my career. I'm sure I'll weave them into some of the questions.
Great. I'll start with the first question, which, of course, we planned these questions in advance, and you have possibly touched on some of the items on that. I'm gonna go with it anyway. All right, in your own words, please explain the role of the superintendent. What do you see as the most important priorities? Do you see Wayland as having differing priorities than other districts? Please elaborate.
Sure. So I'll talk broadly about the superintendency, Chris, first, and Wayland. So I see the superintendency, the superintendent having three major responsibilities. Number one is being the educational leader of a school district, and making sure that a district with a team of people, everything in education is about a team, and I'm thinking teachers, administrators, making sure on the education side that the district is on the right path. That is really, really important in terms of instructional strategies, curriculum, making sure professional development is sound, making sure we're addressing issues of diversity, equity, inclusion in the curriculum. Certainly saw evidence of that as I was walking around the building. And also, thinking about what are reasonable goals? Right now, educators are so overwhelmed, pacing change in the education side is something that school leaders really need to be attuned to. So, and certain, so that's, that's the education side, which is one part of the superintendent. The next part is the management side of the job. How do we deploy resources? How do we develop budgets? What are our personnel practices? How do we evaluate and support in a way that is meaningful to our staff? Management is really important, it's working with the human resources side, the principals to make sure that schools operate effectively and efficiently. If a district is not well managed, does the technology work, the pressure on the educators in the classroom and on principals if the district is not well managed? I was really glad to see that your director of finance is returning. That is, it is so hard right now to find good directors of finance, and I, I was really struck by that, of, you know what, that's a good sign, that somebody wants to return to Wayland, and it is really hard to find directors of finance, and so that's an example of making sure that that person is supported, but, and, you know, you won't need to have a new person, so I think Wayland would be in good shape. But that's part, certainly, of the job. And the last part is the community part of the job. And I, when I call, think of community, I think of both internal stakeholders and external stakeholders. So I'll begin with internal. Building community is such an important part of a superintendent's job. I always spent, I was in a superintendent district of 22 schools, I would spend four days a week somehow in schools, because that is how we connect, is internally knowing educators, knowing their passions, challenges, you can't do that from a district office. And building relationships with teachers, participating in activities, having conversations about pressures that they face, students they're struggling with, district practices that are getting in their way, asking teachers about, you know, what, why they got into teaching for the first place, because, you know, we have had a lot of distractions right now, and thinking about people's passions and pressures, and asking people what they need for support is really important. And in terms of the community building, there's also the external side, which is working with the community and families and community groups. And certainly, you know, if I think about Wayland right now, the pressure externally, given, you know, the past year and a half, people have very, very different perspectives on what happened, you know, on the community side, and part of, you know, the job of a superintendent will be beginning to think about strategies for healing, and I'm sure there'll be questions about that. And then, you know, lastly, the job of the superintendent is to support leaders. And that is, and you asked me about Wayland specifically, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk about leadership, Chris, you know, the turnover. I see that, in my perspective on that, is that districts that start to have superintendent turnover have leadership turnover in other aspects of the district. It's why it's so important, you know, having been a superintendent for a long time, we did not have turnover. And I think when, you know, I, plenty of things I could be better at, but people knew what I was about, and we worked as a team, and we didn't have turnover, except certainly people would leave, like, you know, when Wayland stole Paul in my first year, you know, that was, that was something I, I had to deal with. But I, I think it's really hard, you know, for the leaders in Wayland, you know, if you think about what they ran through after Paul left, they had a superintendent for two years, and then, then they had a superintendent who was lamed up for a year, and then they had, you know, we've had the last year and a half. So a lot of pressure on leaders, and the support for leaders is something that is so important for, you know, superintendent, and I think even more so here. I also think about supporting staff here. It is so hard to be an educator right now, and you add other pressures that we've had here, and people must be at the breaking point. That, that's just my assumption, it's not from, from talking to people. So a special focus on the adults in the district.
Hey, our staff and families have been through a lot through the past few years. How do you envision working with the staff and families to improve morale and trust? Please give specific examples, including effective communication with stakeholders, and how would you work and communicate with the school committees?
Yeah, I will, I'll start with the, the school, I'll start with the school committee, because I was gonna weave them in later, so I'll start with the school committee and then go from there. You know, I think open and honest conversations about challenges, and I begin by listening first. Tonight, I'm doing a lot of talking, that's not what I typically do. I think inquiry and curiosity are really important. Coming into a position like this, I think being open and asking lots of open-ended questions about people's experiences and perspectives. You know, when I think of listening, and I think listening is part of healing, and there are three parts of listening that I think of, and I hope people get to a place where it's listening for understanding. I did something earlier today where I did with one of my kids, I did Listening to Win, where I listened to him, college kid, and then I just shared what I thought. It was Listening to Win, because I said, well, it's nice, but here's, and he, he was totally unsatisfied. And so much of what we do sometimes is Listening to Win, and we've probably had some of that here. And then the last part of listening that I think about that is Listening to Fix. And, you know, when, if I was, as an acting, coming into a situation like this, I would not lead with Listening to Fix, because there's so much other work that needs to be done with Listening for Understanding, and if we can get there with different stakeholders, that's where I would begin. And so then it becomes, how do we structure the listening, particularly with all the emotion? And, you know, I begin, certainly you asked about, it, it's Listening to School Committee Members, and I, I do one-on-one meetings with school committee members every year to get perspectives, and then I think that's really, really important, coming in to do regular check-ins with school committee members. And as I think about leaders over the summer, I, I just would wanna begin by listening to experiences, and then we also have new leaders coming in here. So that's something also to think about, is how do we support new leaders coming in? And I think it's, that, that's really interesting, because they're walking into, just like an acting superintendent would be, something that is, is unique. But I think new leaders, it's about listening for understanding and being curious, and knowing people are under a lot of stress and have experienced a lot of pain. And in terms of, I've talked about leaders, in terms of teachers, you know, working with leaders of the Teachers Association, and doing small focus groups, and also working with principals to help them support teachers, 'cause at the end of the day, as an acting superintendent, if, if leaders can feel supported in buildings and we can stabilize in the leadership level, that's gonna help. If, if principals don't feel supported by a central office, their capacity to support the educators, educators in their building isn't there. And then when educators don't feel supported, who are in classrooms, it's really hard to work directly with kids at your best when you're not feeling supported. And so, you know, the greatest influence of acting superintendent, I think, is with the leaders. It's also, you know, when I think about, you have two student services leadership positions open, there'd be an acting superintendent. open, there'd be an acting superintendent for curriculum instruction, you know, so there's a lot, a lot of it is with new leaders, being a cohesive central office team. And so when I say I, I normally think of we, is how is Wayland going to have a cohesive central office team and principals that can support the entire district? And that I see as something I, I mean, that's, that was my job in a large district like Newton, it's all we. And in a place like Wayland, we're going to need all we as well. And it's important that teachers see that the central office team is on the same page as well. In terms of community, I know that Wayland has, you know, the Wayland Community Group for Social Justice that is a really, you know, I, it's been a really strong group. And I think partnering with community organizations. I was reading last night that on June 7th, 2020, there were 500 people on the Wayland town, downtown, you know, Wayland after George Floyd, you know? And where are those 500 people now as we think about supporting, you know, crises around race and social justice? And, you know, sometimes it's, I, I think of my own, you know, rallying, you know, it's easier with macro issues that we think far away. How do we as a community work with our issues here and talk openly about race? And, and that's something that I do and it's really, really important because we can't ignore issues of race inequity and social justice because that's part of the pain. And, you know, at the end of the day, lastly, I will say that it's so important that people, you asked about morale, that people want to work in Wayland. That is real, that would be a goal for me as an acting superintendent. Kristi Harvey came to me seven years ago and said, I'm applying for a job in Wayland. She was an assistant principal in Newton. What do you think? Should I go to Wayland? And I was able to say, yes, go to Wayland. It is a wonderful environment. I want to be able to say that while I'm an acting superintendent here because that is critical, is having a place where people love to work and want to go every day.
Can, can you please just, sorry, yeah, can you please describe your experience with special education services and the balance between providing what the students need and managing the cost of those services to the town?
Yeah. You know, so I'll tell you my general philosophy about special education, Gina, how I think about it. I think that every district that has excellent general education has to have excellent special education. And Wayland has excellent general education and having excellent special education is really, really important. And so I, it always begins with what would students need and thinking about the programming and services that are best for students. In terms of costs, you know, the other thing I, I think about certainly in Newton is do we have the right systems and structures in place to support students in general education? There are some, you know, we obviously have students with significant disabilities who are going to be in special education. And then we have students who are on the cusp. And do we have the best general education support for students? Certainly while I was a superintendent in Newton, we strengthened our reading intervention. That was really, really important in math support. And I know you have reading and math support specialists and that's, that's really, really important. And, you know, having kids in the classroom to the greatest extent possible is really important, knowing there are times where students need specialized instruction to be out of the classroom. I think the greatest, you know, challenge for me is, has been finding special education leaders to make the changes you want. So I, as a superintendent, are not going to be directly involved in making, of course, those decisions or recommendations, but creating a climate where special education students and families feel supported and making sure the leaders know the values of what the district brings. And that, but I think the biggest challenge for the coming year in Wayland is, you know, having an opening, unless I'm wrong, I saw for, you know, a head of student services and an assistant director. That, that's really going to be the work for an acting person is making sure those people feel supported, that they are listening and learning from the experts that you have in the schools and learning programs in Wayland. And that, that certainly would be a, be a priority. So I, I always think it's beginning with the best education. And sometimes in Newton, we kept more students in district, which in some cases saved us money, but it was done because we wanted to keep our kids in district when we could.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
So why are you interested in pursuing the acting superintendent position in Wayland in July of 2023 specifically? And what do you believe you can contribute to the Wayland Public Schools, our students, staff and families and the Wayland community in that position if you are hired? How would you prepare for starting in Wayland?
Great. So I've had a little time to prepare because I spoke to Erin on Sunday morning, which was when she, you know, she, I think she reached out to me Saturday night saying, you're interested. So, you know, I, I hope you can tell by some of my answers that I, that I prepare. And preparation is everything. So, you know, I know some about Wayland's history, but very little and from a few perspectives. And so I do a lot of homework and research on my own time because I spend, the way I did the job in Newton, I spend every hour of every day with people. When you have 2,400 employees, it's really important to spend all your time with them. And most days I didn't even turn on the computer. And so I think that's going to be particularly important here as well. Spend the time with the people and the other work can take place. So, but I, I think, you know, Wayland specifically, I, I think building trust with adults is something that I value in practice, talking about issues of diversity, equity, inclusion. I've grown a lot in my own work on race. Newton has a fantastic director of DEI, Kathy Loebz. And, you know, she's pushed us in ways and I've grown a lot just in working with Kathy as well as working in diverse districts like Austin, New York and New York City. You know, I have that practice, Erin. I also think that I, I know, getting the right superintendent, I think somebody with experience can work with all of you. I mean, I've already, this is something I've given a little bit of thought to is what should the calendar be for your superintendent search? Cause I think it needs to be, I would think it needs to be really early because whoever gets hired a superintendent, it's going to have to hire a central office team, you know, a permanent central office team. And when you have a late superintendent search, you know, it's building a team. And I think part of the work might be in the fall would be, you know, some of the community work and the healing, but it all leads to superintendent search. And I think interims have a real role or actings in setting up the next superintendent for I, I am aware of, you know, because I think I worked with a successful Wayland superintendent before that person went to Wayland. So I have a sense of, you know, what, what was successful there. And honestly, I, I think the relationship part is so critical. And somebody who has a history of building community, I also think it's part of an acting superintendent to think about candidates and building a team. You know, if I was here, it was like, okay, who would I want to steal from? I gotta be careful, this is on television. But, you know, who would I want to take from Newt, you know, cause that part of it is like, who would you find to Wayland? Cause I, I do think people would want to work in Wayland. Like go back to your director of finance wanting to come here. This is an opportunity, you know, when districts are in a lot of pain and there's a lot of disequilibrium, it's also an opportunity to rebuild and heal. And I think that would be, that would be the goal and set up the leaders for success in the future. And make sure also that we don't have, I haven't talked about teacher turnover because I know there's been a lot of stress in that area as well. And I think we want it, we want Wayland to be a place where people want to work of all races. Because let's face it, you know, the challenge would be, you know, if I'm a, somebody who just got my master's degree and I'm thinking about districts, I'm a person of color, what do I think of Wayland? You know, and that's something to be, you know, open and honest about that. Wayland, when I think of Wayland's history, Wayland was a founding Medco district in 1966, along with Newton and Brookline. And Wayland has a history of being al fun in these issues. How do we, how do we get back to that? Not I just get back to it, but how are we even better moving forward? You know, when you walk in, you see the Black Lives Matter sign, you see Stop Asian Hate. How do we make those signs come alive for our community after this crisis? To me, like that would be the question I'd be asking people.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Wayland families are looking for a superintendent who will listen and put student needs first. Wayland teachers are accustomed to autonomy. How can you balance relationships with both families and our educators so that our students get what they need for success? Please provide examples from your experience.
So I'll start with, you know, educators and autonomy is, I think autonomy with some accountability is, is something that is important now. And I don't mean test scores when I say accountability. It's really being accountable to our colleagues in teaching. You know, I have conversations with teachers, teachers really care about what happened the year before and did students have common experiences with, with teachers? And I think working in teacher teams and collaborating is something that I really care about and setting up the systems and structures for teachers to do that. I think that, you know, something I always talk about is that isolation is the enemy of improvement. And when teachers, I mean, especially right now here, the need for support and collaboration in so many ways. And I think that's true in teaching where, you know, students, some students are having a really hard time right now in all districts that they haven't had before. And I think that's why teachers need each other more than ever in terms of teams, in terms of thinking about how technology has, has changed. I think, I think face-to-face education and one thing we've learned during the pandemic, you know, before the pandemic, people would sometimes ask me, what do you think the future is of like online schooling? Well, I think we've learned it's all about the teachers and the adults. And I, I come with that philosophy. And so I, I think that it's teachers being, you know, accountable to each other and supporting one another. And autonomy, if it's creativity with some consistency, but we don't want consistency where teachers are just doing, you know, right out of the same playbook. But so with some flexibility and creativity, I think there's that fine balance. And that's something, you know, I encourage principals is to, you know, run with creativity with teachers as long as kids are getting common and consistent experiences. Cause you know, Erin, to get back to families, that's what families sometimes struggle with is inconsistent experiences. I'm the parent of twins. And so I'm a parent of twins who did not always want the kids in the same classes. So I saw really, you know, obviously I would see it as a superintendent, but to experience kind of experiences that way. So I understand it. On the other hand, having different experiences, kids get, have to get used to that because you have different bosses and different expectations. On the other hand, having some common experiences and also communicating that to families about what we expect, whether it's curriculum coordinators, you know, I think like in a place like Wayland, an assistant superintendent for teaching and learning has to be able to communicate with parents, with principals about expectations and what families can, can expect. And that is important and that's through written materials, sometimes on websites. But it's also presentations because I think that schools have changed a lot. I don't know if any of you have tried helping your kids with their math homework lately?
I try not to.
You don't, you don't recognize it. And, you know, my philosophy, when, when parents push me on that and say, you know, the math isn't like what it was when I went to school. And I said, because schools are evolving and always changing based on research, just like they are in healthcare. They've given a lot of folks, you know, work in healthcare. So that happens, but I think we have to explain why kids are using manipulatives and why math looks different. And kids will be well-prepared even though school may be different. Cause we want school to be different because if it was the same as when all of us went to school, we wouldn't be making progress.
Thank you.
The committee takes its anti-racism resolution seriously. We have families of color who live in our town and who live in Boston. Please describe specific ways in which you've provided advancement for students of color and other marginalized student populations in your previous districts and share what actionable steps you have taken to improve communication, acceptance, and ensure all families and more specifically families of color and other marginalized groups feel welcome in our schools.
Yeah. So I'm going to answer that in two ways, Chris. First, I'm going to talk about kind of all the work I did with Newton. And then I'm going to talk about some of the unique challenges we might face, you know, you might face in Wayland right now and how I might think about that differently. Cause I think Newton and Wayland have some similar history as districts that are seen as kind of progressive. I also want to say that I, I faced incredible challenges of race in my own district. So in many ways, this is not, obviously this is amplified what we're talking about, but I will say that I had an issue with, at the school level with a leader that was incredibly challenging and difficult that had some similar issues of what you have in terms of people having different perspectives in the leadership, a lot of staff tension, a lot of healing that needs to be done at the school. And for me, it was listening, again, as I said earlier, with understanding, knowing right away I couldn't do the listening defects. And schools are going to have incidents and families often judge us on how we respond to incidents with students because all schools have unfortunately incidents around race. And how, number one, it's how do we respond swiftly to let families know about what we don't tolerate and students what we don't tolerate. It's also equipping adults to talk about race with kids. And one thing that's really hard for students is that when they, after an incident in a school, and I, I'm not sure what to do about this. This is like a dilemma that I think a lot about is that kids will say, you know, in this class, the teachers talked about what happened and in this class they didn't, around an incident in school around race. It might be an incident that happened, you know, in, in a community nearby. And I think that goes certainly to equipping adults to talk about race. And, you know, I even think here about how are adults talking about what happened here with kids? That has to be really, really hard. And different people are equipped differently to do that. And, you know, some of that is on the, and, and one thing I've learned from our DEI director in Newton, it's up to the white people to lead the work and not look at the DEI director, you know, solely. And that, that's something that I, I fully believe is that we need to engage in the work. So it's about getting white people prepared to talk about race is, is really, really important. And that's work that I've led. You know, the, the first thing, you know, as a way to get to know leaders I might do as an acting superintendent is to ask leaders to come up with their racial biography about how race, they've experienced race in their lives and when did they notice race? And what are their experiences with race growing up? And for me, when I do that with leaders, they know that I care about their learning and being curious about race. And if you can't talk about, you know, learning by your own biography is, is an incredible experience if people have very varied biographies and then you begin kind of to grow there. So I, I think, you know, thinking about it in new ways is how can Wayland, given where the world is right now and what we've experienced, what can we do differently that we haven't done before and talk about race? And, and it's dealing with our own community. That, that's part of, and certainly, you know, I'm aware of Rebecca Smolow's terrific work that she's, I think she's in Shattler and she used to be here. And, you know, so you have like a group of parents and how do parents talk with their kids about race as well? You know, black people talk with their kids about race every single day. White people don't have to. And And how do we equip parents to talk to their kids about race? Because parents, kids notice when their parents don't. And, you know, that's something, after going enough of these workshops as an administrator, I've made a lot of parenting mistakes. I think I referred to one earlier, I tried to fix something. But I, I've learned to talk to my kids about race. And that's because of all the seminars I went to as an educator and a teacher. And if we can equip people to talk to the kids about race, that, that's, that's like, that's an incredible gift. And also talk about, you know, give parents to have, kids have experiences that they wouldn't normally have. You know, going to different parts of the world and parts of Boston is really, really important. And, and then engaging, I think, you know, as I think about, if I was a new family moving to Wayland that was black or Latino or a new Medco family coming in, I'd have really open and honest conversations about what went on here because there's going to be fear, there's going to be loss and a lot of anxiety, which some of the people fear. And so that's something I would think about is being really open and honest about race. That, that's the best thing we can do. And to teach our kids to do that and help our families and our educators. And also having, you know, there's also a time, I, I think, to, to grieve because people are really feeling a great sense of loss here about what went on and a lot of, and a lot of pain. Part of it is helping and listening to people's experiences. Whatever they've experienced over the past year and a half is allow people to do that in psychologically safe spaces. And that's something else, I think, is a part of a superintendent is establishing psychological safety. And that's really hard to do when there's a lot of passion and emotion. But that would be a goal.
That's great.
Thank you. So would you provide a concrete example from your past experience as a superintendent where you faced, you faced with a difficult conflict involving at least two or more parties and a challenging time for the district? Describe the nature of the conflict or challenge, how you approached it, and what was the result of your intervention? And if you had it to do all over again, what would you have done differently?
Oh, my gosh, there, um, I'm going through, um, you know, I'll, I'll talk about, I'm going to, I'm going to tell you that I've dealt with a lot of crises in, in general. And the hardest thing I ever did as a superintendent in terms of dealing with emotion was we had three students die by suicide in four months in 2013 and 14. And so, you know, some of the skills I learned about listening and dealing with people's pain, I learned a lot from that. And that's how I kind of learned to deal with pain. In terms of, I'm going to tell you a, a mistake that I made, which was that we have a lot of challenges with school buildings and facilities in Newton. And we had one building that was in terrible shape. And I was under a lot of pressure from the school committee to do something about it. And we had another building, a swing space building that was in pretty good shape, but the classrooms weren't perfect. And people had very different feelings about whether we should move the school or not. And I didn't get enough input from certain people before making a decision because I was under so much pressure to do it swiftly. And I think that that's something I've learned is that getting input from so many of the right parties beforehand is so important because it wasn't, it wasn't the right decision. And, you know, once you move people, there's no going back. And the only thing that saved me was COVID happened a year later and there was no air quality in the school that I moved the teachers from. But it was, the classrooms were too small and it was, it wasn't the right thing to do. So, you know, in terms of the parties, I should have done, or I should have had our team done more listening and learning. And, because a lot of, when you work in a district like Newton, a lot of the work is distributed. And I didn't press certain assistant superintendents enough in terms of their work. And that ends up being really important is asking the right questions, which I didn't do. And then I think the last thing I will say is that, the one thing I did do well is acknowledging it was a mistake. And that's really, really hard to do. That is really, really hard to do and really, really painful to say, I made a mistake and I'm really, really sorry. And that's, it's good practice, but it doesn't change the impact on the parties.
Thank you.
All right, changing to budget.
All right.
Wayland's facing a very tight FY24 school budget as 1.2 million was cut from the original recommended budget. A large part of our budget increase this year includes a 48% increase in special education services, or expenses. What is your experience working with an extremely tight budget, creative solutions to working within the budget to provide the necessary services for all our students and budgeting for future years? And also, do you have any experience with MSBA building projects as we've submitted a statement of interest for an elementary scale project?
Right, now, I, when I started in Newton, Jeanie, I literally, when I say I didn't have gray hair, I didn't even have any budgets in Newton. I think you know what's going on there. Now, I, I stay, once, once I leave a district, I stay away because it's important to, you know, stay away. However, any of you know what's going on in Newton tonight? You have students playing string orchestra in the parking lot as people are going into the budget hearing because strings are getting cut. I mean, that's so, I mean, Newton has had, the budget stuff in Newton is, is, is so hard. I also was a superintendent chaplain during the Great Recession where our, we had, when our budget, budget, I had a zero budget increase one year to deal with that. And so, you know, I don't mean to be flip because it's, it's really, really hard. And I think I've had so much experience dealing with, with tight budgets, more than I would want. And it, it's so hard, you know, we were talking earlier about community and morale. How do you maintain morale and community when you're making the kind of cuts that I've made in my career? It, it is really, really hard. And, you know, I think we begin with what's most important in terms of our values. And that's a conversation with an entire community about what do we value? And, and certainly, those are really important decisions to have. So I'll give you a sense of how I would lead a discussion. There, there are five pillars of a school budget. Number one, and this is so you get a sense of how I think about it, is educational program. Wayland's a place that values the arts and electives and the educational program. So that's one part of a pillar of a school budget. The next part is class size. Having reasonable class sizes is expensive, right? That's people. That's the second pillar of a school budget. In Newton, given the order I didn't pass, they're going to have some 12 elementary classes with 25 to 28. They're willing to sacrifice some on the, on the program. I mentioned strings and class size. The next pillar is student services. You know, and I, that's, I, I don't just mean special education, but think about other supports for students in terms of counseling and psychologists, you know, that's really hard to touch right now, right? I mean, I'm not saying I wouldn't do it and give my own values, but like, that's, that's the next pillar. And that's, that's really hard. And then I introduce the next pillar, which is school facilities and taking care of buildings, which is, you know, really, really, it's an important part. And then sometimes there's not a lot of facilities in operations, you know. And then I, I think also about another fixed cost there is kind of technology is now a fixed cost with facility in terms of, I call that operations. You know, can you defer for a little bit? And then, you know, the last part is everything else that we support in the classroom around professional development and curriculum coordinators. And, you know, we made some cuts last year, my last year in curriculum coordination, and I so regretted doing it because that was the support to teachers in the classroom. And, you know, they, they ended up actually reinstating a little bit in this year's budget, which I'm glad they did because they saw the pain. And, and sometimes you need to see the pain and then you reinstate. So those are the, those are the five. And that's kind of the framework because I think we all need a framework to think about and work from. And where do we go when they're all, when they're all really, really hard? But I, I try to provide the clarity. And then, you know, there's also administration. But in places like Wayland, you know, you're, you're pretty lean. In Newton, you can touch pieces of administration. Certainly, we always look at administration because we want to preserve the sanctity of the classroom. However, you know, if I was to go to some teachers at Newton South, if you reduce deans, they don't have anybody to send kids to when they need help and support. And right now, the deans are busier than ever. That's the equivalent kind of assistant principals that we have. And so it's, you know, some of that is getting feedback from educators, from family members. So I, I do have lots of experience. In terms of the MSBA process, yes. So, you know, I'm, I'm going to be honest, it's like, my role with 22 schools is that I make sure the MSBA process is done. And I know the executive director of the MSBA very well. And my job is to make sure that our mayor would consult with the head of the MSBA. And then we have, you know, we had a team of people do it. That being said, I know how important it is to have the director of facilities involved, principals. And as a superintendent in Wayland, I would be much more involved in an MSBA than I would in a super, as a superintendent in Newton. But again, I, we, we actually had two MSBA schools in Newton done while I was, while I was there.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
So what are your thoughts on planning for school safety? What is your position on police involvement in the schools? And please give examples from previous districts.
It's, it's, you know, it's quite a question that you're, that you're asking. I, my first job as a leader in New York in education was, one of my first years was on 9/11. So that has forever added impact on me in terms of safety and being in New York and how to, and making people feel safe and, and without that, you know, going to work. And I think that, that's really, really important right now. And, you know, we think about our, our kids and what they say. I mean, it's just, just incredible what goes on. And so I think it's making sure we have the right procedures and to have trusting relationships with our police. In terms of having, you know, police in schools, I was around, you know, the DARE program. Some of our teachers may remember DARE or some of you maybe as students may remember DARE. And, you know, that was, the research didn't support DARE in terms of its effectiveness after a long period. But certainly, we want kids to have positive relationships with police. And the question is, you know, that's always my goal is to have kids have positive interactions with police, particularly in high school. And that being said, I, I don't think, you know, police and depending on the community need to be patrolling hallways. But having interactions with police for, you know, particularly secondary administrators is really, really important because kids are only in school one part of the day. And some of the behaviors on the weekends, it's really important that high school administrators work really closely with, with police to solve problems and deal with community issues. I also think it's important for police to consult us on what we can do in, in school, in schools in terms of drills and being a part to make sure our drills are done really well. And to make sure there are adults in each building in teams who are really expert on safety. And having building safety coordinators and having district leadership in that area is really, really important as well. And it's something that families really want to know as well, given what, what's going on. And I think actually kids do, kids do too. They want to know that the adults are, are prepared and can communicate that. Sure.
Is there anything else you would like to tell us about yourself?
Yeah, I mean, I think that when, when I started with, I really missed being a superintendent. And, you know, we, we've talked a lot about some really serious topics and, you know, given, given the work and given where Wayland is, it's a serious topic. But I, the one reason I love the job is that I actually have fun. And, you know, we're in the month of, the last month in March. I spend most of March playing in student faculty basketball games in March Madness. And I think it's important that superintendents also engage as a community member. You know, I, I run in every PTO race. My times went down while I was a superintendent. That was the worst thing is that, you know, one parent said to me, I noticed your times got worse during your tenure. And I said, well, that's what happens.
That's life.
And, you know, it's, it's funny, I, I was in a, I was in a story the other, about two weeks ago, and I ran into a student who was 23. And he came up and said hello to me and he said, you know, I remember, actually, he's a little younger than that. He's like 20, it was my, it was my first or second year as a superintendent. And he said, I remember you were in my class. And he was a great runner. And his name was Deshaun. And we were talking about running there. And I said to him, I'm faster than you. And he said, no, you're not. And the principal was also a runner. And we got the whole fifth grade together at the Bowen School. And we had a running race with the three of us. And 10 years later, he still remembered that, you know, and stopped me. And like, people need to see that superintendents are human beings and cheerleaders and part of a community as well. And I think, you know, Erin, during these really difficult times, like somehow we have to make sure that we bring the joy back. And adults need to experience that and kids need to experience that while we're doing all the other work that I was talking about. And we'll get there. It's not going to happen, it's not going to happen right away. But I think we have to remember that most of us who work in schools do it for the joy, you know? It's why I actually wanted it. People said, why do you want to come back? Because I actually, as hard as this is, I know how to have fun while doing everything else. And this, that was just one small example of how I do it.
Did you win?
It was a two-way tie. What I was nervous about, what I was nervous about is that what ended up happening also is that I, I do retreats with our administrators every year. And we, because we had choice time because as educators, we always provide choice. So we have a walking group. We have an arts group that does arts and crafts. And I lead the running group. And what happens is, is that we have a couple of really fast principals. And they're younger than I am now. And apparently, I learned when I was leading that one of them would let me win. So, you know, that, that would, so it's hard to tell. But, but back then, I think we were all fast. But, but that's part of the job that I mentioned earlier is being part of a community, is engaging in, in very different ways to get to know people as well, because I like, I like doing that.
Thank you.
Do you, do you have any questions you would like to ask us before we wrap up?
Sure, as you, as you think, you know, I tried to outline, you know, the three things I would think of doing early on in terms of, you know, building a leadership team and supporting them, making sure the educators, be, be healed and supported and hear from educators. And also working with all of you to think about the future of a district and a superintendent search. And those are the three things I think of. But I should have said that I don't establish goals by myself. Those are just what I've had since Sunday after talking to Erin. Like, that's what came to mind. But I'm interested because successful school districts, we all work together. It's not like a superintendent come up with goals. I could not always tell a school committee, they're shared. What would the goals be like? What did I miss in thinking about priorities as you all would think about, you know, the coming year?
Yeah, there's one thing I, through this process, wished I'd written a question about. Sorry, Jeanie. And I think it's because I think there is sort of an epidemic, not only of sadness and anxiety, but also of bullying among our kids. And that's something that I, I think is a real priority for almost any school, but certainly our school as well. So. So if there was something that I kind of wished had been part of this conversation that I just didn't think of when I was writing the questions, right? That's, that's what I would, I would sort of throw out there in addition to the things that we focused on. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd have to say, when you laid that out for me, it was like, yes, that's what we need. Like, that really, everything you said sort of resonated. So I think you, for me, you were on the right track.
I think in threes, that's the way. So like, you should know.
I'm liking your pillars.
People get sick of like, like, I believe like, systems and structures. So I do, when I talk, I do three points. So that's why I thought of three, that's why I was thinking is there fourth? But it wouldn't work in my three and then five pillars. It's just not right.
I would say, and you said it, so I'm just really repeating what you already said. But I would say healing and supporting the principals and administrators so they have the ability to support their teachers so that their teachers focus on their students. To me, those are the two main items.
And I think, Ellen, I appreciate what you said. And I, we, I didn't, you know, student mental health is obviously aligned with that, and that becomes critical. You notice in the answer to your question, I did not, you know, the student services around guidance and psychologists, that, that's why I was talking about that pillar right now so important in relation.
I think, I think we need some more robust SEL in our district. I was, did you have some?
I was just going to say that one of the things that really resonated with me that you said, well, it's two. One, listening to understand. I think it's an epidemic in life that people listen to win. And I think that could really go a long way here in helping foster a more supportive environment. So that's one. And the second was huge, and that's acknowledging when you make mistakes. I think that that's also something that could really be a good goal for our district, just to, it's really hard, right? It's really hard to apologize. It's really hard to acknowledge, like, yeah, I didn't think that one through, or, you know, whatever it is. And I just think that's, that's really something that this district could use. Not that you're going to make any mistakes, but.
Yeah, no, it's hard. And I think in a high-stakes environment, it's really hard, you know. But like, part of it is like, I always think we're modeling for others and if we could acknowledge, you know. And it, sometimes it's easier to acknowledge mistakes, you know, when you're in a district for a while. And that's another reason I think it's great for Wayland to have a long-term superintendent who's a part of the community who can make a mistake. It's easier to acknowledge that, as, you know, I, I made that mistake later on. I think early on, getting good starts is also really important, which I talked about. Like, how do we have a new superintendent get a really good start? Like, that's really, really important.
I was just going to say, I think we have a really good foundation in Wayland. We've had, it's been a tough couple of years from COVID and then what's happened here this year. And I think, you talked a lot about this, you know, bringing back healing and, and trust and that type of thing. And I also think the joy, just, we were talking earlier about the kids. The kids are happy, they're, you know, and, which is due in a large part to, I mean, it's really due, not in large part. It is due to our teachers and the people who are in the classroom with them. And just keeping that joy as, as we move forward.
That's great. Well, thank you very much. We really appreciate the time.
Thanks for your good questions.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
All right, bye-bye.
Thank you, Jeanie.
Thanks. Appreciate it. Appreciate you.
Nice to meet you.
I'll meet you too.
Nice to meet you.
You as well. Thank you. Everything? Yes. My healthy Colby, he is. Don't forget that. He was the one who I tried to pick some.
Always a great meeting you.
Thanks, Jess. Great to meet you.
Thanks.
Thanks for all your good communication.
Absolutely. Thanks for coming.
Bye, everybody.
Dave just wants to say hi.
Hi, very good. Oh, nice to meet you. Yes, congratulations. Yeah.
Well, he was.
I could, I could, he was hiding.
Oh, he was. He was behind the screen. Are we done with this?
Yeah.
Do you want to make a motion?
Oh, you need to make my motion. Sorry. Why say Jones?
I just need to find my.
Respectful effect that I had set going on here. Thanks for coming over. Thanks.
No worries. Okay.
So you changed the, which you needed to do next?
I didn't. It was my crap. It's okay.
You didn't use that. You know what? That's so funny. I missed that out on the agenda. When we were doing the timing diet, we only put a half hour for that interview. Oops. That's why.
I extended it to one hour.
I just.
I know. Though we're behind.
They're a little spicy. And they're delicious. They were giving out samples. And I tasted it, and I was like, oh, my gosh.
Okay. I move to enter executive session for the purposes of discussion strategy. Discussion regarding strategy with respect to collective bargaining with Wayland Teachers Association, WTA, Wayland Educational Secretaries Association, custodians of food service pursuant to MGL, Chapter 38, Section 21A3, review and declassification of executive session minutes as listed pursuant to MGL, Chapter 38, Section 22, approval of executive session minutes pursuant to MGL, Chapter 38, Section 22, December 15, 2021, December 22, 2021, January 5, 2022, January 18, 2023, number one, January 25, 2023, February 8, 2023, March 29, 2023, review response of March 30, 2023, and April 3, 2023, open meeting lockup plans filed by George Harris pursuant to MGL, Chapter 38, Section 21A1. School committee will be joined by Perry Graham, acting superintendent, and Diane Marabella, recording secretary. School committee will adjourn an executive session and will not reconvene an open session. Do I have a second?
Second.
Erin?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Jeanie?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Chris? Yes. All right. Moving into executive session at 9:30.